City Unified School District Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for joining us and we are going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to start with 1.2, our Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to have Jones Elementary come on at this time and lead us in the pledge.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart, ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in true public, for it stands one nation under God, indivisible, their liberty and justice for all.
Oh my goodness, you gotta love it. That was absolutely wonderful. All right, moving on to 9.3, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. I heard Mr. Tillman. It's been moved in second and I believe there are some items to pull. Dr. Volkimer somewhere, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. We'd like to pull item 4.5, we'll bring that back in the future.
Okay. All right, and we will go ahead and move forward with the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye motion carried, thank you so much. And we are now at 1.4 inspirational message and we are being inspired by Dr. Wyatt tonight.
Oh, well, thank you, Madam President and good evening to everyone, good afternoon, great to see everybody. You know, I, you know me, I always like videos, but I also like poems and I love quotes, so I'm gonna do a couple of things here, just, just in honor of Black History Month and you know, we, we have a lot of celebrations, so I don't want to start everybody's thunder tonight for board comments, but you know, we, we had a little victory in regards to justice recently, so I'll leave it at that, but you know, just a quick quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and then we'll, we'll see a really nice inspirational video, but we need to know that it's not possible to be in favor of justice for some people and not be in favor of justice for all people. So let's just remember that, that justice applies to all of us and we want equity for all, so you know, and I know that's our, our goal here as a board. But right now, we're gonna see a very motivational video by a young man and he calls himself Kid President. And I think you guys are gonna love it. Couple of things just to remember that we believe in you, that's one of his messages, and be bold, be kind, and be awesome. So let's, let's roll it.
It's time to think about your future, man. Some people think the future's gonna be dark, like people crying, robots crying, Arnold Schwarzenegger. But I think about the future a lot and I believe it's gonna be awesome, has to be. It will be. Sure, there's bad things in the world, but there's also pizza. Wait, I can do something better. It's like nothing better. Yes, there's bad stuff, but it doesn't have to stay that way. People being mean to people, not treating people like they're people. That's why we need people like you. We just gotta change some stuff. Like, wouldn't it be cool if we could just all be cool? Like, just all be cool to each other, like, be cool, man. Show kindness around, like confetti. Kindness is less messy. Don't judge someone unless you walk them out of their shoes. Also, don't steal the shoes, borrow them, and then return them, and then be friends. Make a ruckus for good. You got this. When life gives you lemons, post about them online, so people feel sorry for you. No, no, you don't do that. When life gives you lemons, you gotta make lemonade and drink it, and then you dance. Be the reason somebody dances this week. You see, there's the way things are, there's the way things could be, and, and there's you. And I believe in you. I believe in you because somebody believed in me. And I guess somebody believed in them. And then it's like a whole chain, someone believed in them, and then someone believed. Believing in people is contagious and that's good because we got a lot of people. Did you know there's over 2 billion people under the age of 20 in the world? 2 billion, and I'm one of them. What if every one of them knew somebody believed in them? When you do something with a kid, it sticks with them. Anything you do for a kid. A smile, a book, teaching them to tie a tie, pancakes. It becomes part of who they are. They may not thank you or act like they noticed, but they won't forget. That's change in the future, man. Change a little, then you can change a lot. What will the future look like? Will there be flying cars? Will there be jetpacks? Will there be hoverboards? I don't know. If you build them, there will be. Sure, there's bad stuff in the world, but there's also you. You can be anything that you want today, so be bold, be kind, be awesome. Repeat. It's like shampoo, but with your life. One of the superpowers that we all have is the ability of changing the future. You may not feel like you have that much, but you have right now, and that's a lot. Take time to listen. Listen to a kid, believe in a kid. Teachers, to librarians, to parents, to everybody who works with kids. We're changing the future. Tomorrow will be better because how awesome you're gonna make today.
Well, I don't know about you guys, but that, that young man, you know, I watched that video quite a few times and it just makes me smile end over end and you know, to our students out there, we absolutely believe in you and you're definitely our future and you continue to impress us time and time again. And you'll be creating things that we don't even know about. And I'll, I'll take a, you know, a jet car or jet hoverboard any day, so whenever one of you make those, that'll be great. And so, be cool, but I'm gonna turn it over to one of the coolest persons I know and that is Madam President, so.
Thank you for that. That was absolutely, I, I, I loved it. I wanted to get up and dance, Scott. You came, you knocked it out of the park. We gotta be kind. All right, so moving on to 2.1 Resolution and Recognition of President's Day. Dr. Hill? Are you able to come off mute and read that for us today?
Do, Madam President. Let me just situate myself a little bit, thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas the State of California designated the third Monday in February as President's Day and honored George Washington, the first president of the United States of America who contributed to the birth of the country through his military, political, and personal accomplishments. And this holiday also honors the life of President Abraham Lincoln and whereas General George Washington, born in 1732, served as commanding chief of the Continental Army during the American Revolutionary War, inspiring and motivating soldiers to fight for their freedom despite the poor conditions most soldiers faced. And whereas President's Day also recognizes the contributions and legacy of the United States presidents like Abraham Lincoln and American statesman and lawyer who served as the 16th president of the United States from 1861 until his assassination in 1865. And Lincoln led the nation through the American Civil War. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does join California and the nation in celebrating the birth of the first president of the United States of America and encourages district teachers to include George Washington's and Abraham Lincoln's contributions as part of the history of our nation.
For move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye motion carried, thank you so much. We are now at 3.1, public comments for our closed session. And Karen, is there a comment? Any comments?
Yes, Madam President, there is. If Catalina Castillo could unmute and give your comment.
Is Ms., is it Castillo's, Ms. Cunningham, did you say?
Yeah, Ms. Castillo.
She put in the chat, she needs permission, okay.
Yes, good evening. Board President Rogers and Vice President Wyatt, board members and all other present. My name's, I am Ramona Alessandro, School Site Council and ELAC parent. Dear Board Members, before you decide the fate of our Alessandro community, we would like for you to keep in mind the following. We would like to share our sincerest appreciation for Teresa Hopkins for inspiring our students to achieve their dreams every single day. Words cannot begin to describe how thankful we are for the work she has done and the many years she has been at our school. Her strong leadership is the foundation of school success and without her, our school would be lost. We are continually impressed with her ability to unite our school community. She has set such a welcoming and positive tone on campus and created a wonderful example for others. She has fostered a sense of support and appreciation that allows us to improve daily. Her long hours of hard work have made such a difference to ensure the learning and growth of all of our students. We really appreciate her constant dedication to keep us parents updated and informed, especially during these rapidly changing times. Her dedication to our students and community shows in every decision made. We feel very fortunate to have her during these challenging times. It has not been an easy transition for any of us with recent events leaving us heartbroken. But her leadership and positive attitude have helped pull us through. Without her impressive organization and incredible passion for the students, our community would not be what it is today. Her vision, wisdom, and passion for this school is apparent every time she speaks to us during school events and meetings. She has done an incredible job of listening to many concerns and has kept us excited about improving our school. We don't want to lose her. Having Ms. Hopkins as our new principal would be the best thing that could happen to our school and community. She is clearly the best option for our school. To Ms. Hopkins, I would like to say thank you for setting high expectations for our students and educators. Your ability to empathize with our students and constant belief in the staff inspires. We are forever grateful for your impact on this school. Never forget how amazing you are and how much of a difference you have made a Ramona Alessandro. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Castillo. Are there any other comments, Ms. Cunningham?
No, that was the only one.
Okay, all right. Well, at this time, we're now going to adjourn. We are now at 3.2 and we will adjourn for the closed session. And we will see all of our viewing audience shortly. Board members, we need to log out of this screen and into our closed session. Board members, we need to log out of this screen and into our closed session.
Oh, okay. All right, let's see who's back. All right, Dr. Wyatt, I see you back. And. Hmm. I'm looking for other board members. I don't see them. I seen it's the bios. Dr. Wyatt, can you hear me?
I'm here, Dr. Army.
Okay, okay, I see. We see, okay, we see Ms. Rosales Medina, I see Dr. Wyatt, I think I saw Ms. Savios. I see Mr. Tillman just popped in. I think I'm looking for. Dr. Flores and Dr. Hill. Do we see the other two board members? Dr. Hill, Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I'm here. I couldn't get on.
Okay, okay, I see you.
No, I couldn't get on either. But I'm on now.
Okay, yeah, he has to, it's kind of a little bit technical things that they have to do to get us all back in. So it's a little delay, but we are back and thank you all for your patience. We are now resuming our board meeting. And we are now at four point oh reconvene to open session. Four point one elementary school principal, human resources. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee. Cynthia Zavala, elementary school principal Roosevelt affected date, work year and salary to be determined.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no other discussion, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Savios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt? Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. And we are now at four point two. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee. Teresa Hopkins, elementary school principal Ramona Alessandro. Effective. Date and work year and salary to be determined. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Savios? Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. Four point three Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee Mario Jacquez. Jacquez, Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, effective date, work year and salary due to be determined.
So moved.
Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And if there's no discussion, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Savios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. And we definitely want to congratulate all of those appointments. And we look forward to seeing you in our upcoming meetings, but congratulations to you. We are now at four point four. HR class twenty twenty-one. HR class twenty twenty one zero four ER. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district HR class twenty dash twenty one dash zero four ER. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I don't, I don't remember talking about, we talked about someone being
disciplined.
No, she said.
Dismissal, I know, but I thought was
Yeah. HR on number, okay, we had to, let me see if there's, yeah, there's ones, is that correct on four point four? The wording?
Um, Madam President, our apologies. What we should have done, I'm re-reviewing it now. I believe what we should have done is a is taken four point four, pulled item four point four, which is
Was that the, okay, that you did have one.
That correct, Dr. Funchess?
So the one that we speak of is correct. Dr. Flores, correct. It's, it's more of a discipline. I'm looking at the agenda now.
The wording
Could be four point five and four point
Was correct? Did we pull four point five? I thought
You pulled by mistake, he's saying we actually could be taking out four point five.
The wording does look, yeah, looks correct on the second one, but not on four point
Should have been, so the pulling should have been at four point four, not
We should vote on four point five.
I just
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tillman. That's why I didn't second it.
Okay, so I'm going to
Madam President, before you
Face and I was like, wait a minute, what did we just read? Okay, so I'm going, four point five has been, was pulled initially, so we need to include it back in the agenda?
I knew that we reinstated four point five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote Mr. Tillman?
Well, we'll make, I gotta make a motion.
So my, my, my question is, we're putting it back in and then we're gonna vote on it?
So I want to make a motion to approve four point five.
Okay, so you're, you're making a motion to approve it, which is also putting it back in, but I need to go ahead and read it then. If we're gonna, if we can do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary, oh, I'm sorry, wait, wait, four point five. Yes, notice of recommendation for disciplinary action, statement of charges to suspend without pay for two days. The following classified employee from his or her employment with the district HR class twenty dash twenty one dash eleven ER.
I thought we said in closed session was five days.
Correct.
Of what?
So Madam President, before we move forward, I'd like, I'd like, uh, Dr. Funchess, if he needs to, to propose any amendment to four point five, that may be necessary.
Okay.
Thank you all. So just listening in, the four point five is the one that we removed from, uh, the agenda, and that was correct. Um, I think the wording on four point four, we may need to revisit. Uh, in closed session, we did talk about the discipline, uh, in terms of the day count. So, um, the day count was correct that, uh, Mr. Tillman just spoke of. That, that makes sense?
So a point of clarification, Dr. Funchess, so four point four is correct, but it shouldn't dismissal, it should be disciplinary.
Correct.
And with five day suspension without pay.
That's what we discussed. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
So can Karen, can we get the verbiage on that? Can we get it corrected so we can
Yeah, I'm working on it. I need
All right.
Can someone just tell me what it should say?
Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts the
Recommendation of
The notice for recommendation of disciplinary action, this should be for four point four.
And then add
Charges to suspend without pay for five days, the following classified employee. Uh, and then the right number read in for four point four, which is, uh,
From four point five into four point four.
Right, so
Okay, so we're still pulling four point five.
Right.
Four point four should say disciplinary action for five days.
Right.
The remainder of, right, what's being said on four point five.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
So move.
Seconds.
All right. And if there's no further discussion on that correction, uh, we'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Savios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye, same.
And, uh, Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you so much. And Karen, just please do just double check that we have everything correct on that. And I will move now to our public hearing. Five point oh, five point one, public hearing on, um, Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter Renewal. I am going to open up the public comment and on December ninth, twenty twenty, Ms. Eva Tillman led petitioners for the Savant Preparatory
Meeting
Yes, I was, okay, I'll say it now. I was gonna say it later, but okay, go ahead. On December ninth, twenty twenty, Ms. Eva Tillman led petitioners for the Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. Submitted a charter renewal petition to the charter schools operation department. A public hearing will be held at this time to consider the level, level of support for the charter petition. The board will not vote on Savant Academy's charter renewal petition at this time. So this is just a public hearing and there will be no action on it. I believe we have a presentation from, um, Savant Prep, if I'm correct, Ms. Cunningham?
Um, the video will be last. We will do all the public comments first and do the
All right, we will take the public comments and then we will have a presentation.
All right, the first one will be, um, Ms. Eva Tillman, if you can unmute.
Eva, are you there?
I'm here. Uh, to President Gwen Rogers, to Vice President Wyatt, uh, all board members cabinet, uh, in our interim superintendent, Dr. Volkmer. And really everyone joining us online tonight. Good evening. Uh, my name is Eva Tillman and I am here with Jeanette Balcazar and Gia Reese as co-founders of Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. Uh, we come before you today just respectfully requesting the renewal of our charter school. Uh, we just really wanted to start by saying thank you. Uh, we are just sincerely grateful for, uh, the board's blessing to operate and serve our beloved San Bernardino community. Um, it seems like yesterday, but it has been three years since we were initially approved. Um, and we have had the chance to really do some great things with our scholars and parents. We are just grateful for that opportunity. Uh, we hope that it will be the decision of the board to renew our charter petition tonight for Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, our next speaker will be Gia Reese, if you would like to unmute. And my apologies, I believe it was Jeanette Balcazar who wanted to speak next. My apologies.
Okay, Jeanette, are you on?
Hi.
There you are.
Perfect. Hi, uh, hello, my name is Jeanette Balcazar. I'm Director of Curriculum and Instruction and co-founder of Savant Prep. And I'm just here to address our community tonight. We would like to begin by thanking the community that has supported us. Um, to Dr. Owens and New Hope Missionary Baptist Church Apostle and Dr. Dumas. And All Nations Worship Assembly, the San Bernardino Valley Chapter of the Links Incorporated, headed by Ms. Kathleen Hall. Um, Jack and Jill of America Pomona Area Chapter led by Patrice Cold Marle. Just thank you all for everything you have done through your organizations to support our scholars, our babies. This is certainly a village and we are grateful to everyone who has visited our campus. Donated or even liked or share our success stories on social media. So we're just sincerely grateful for all of you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next one is Ms. Gia Reese, if you'd like to unmute.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Gia Reese. I'm Director of Operations and co-founder for Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. I am addressing our parents, um, and our scholars, to our courageous staff, dedicated parents, brilliant scholars. Um, we honor you. We will continue to do this work with everything we have, um, because you make it all worth it. We have created, or actually we have a ten minute video prepared by Clarice Productions that highlights some amazing testimonials from our parents, students and community supporters. So please sit back and enjoy this presentation.
Okay, um, our next speaker will be Christina Constantino, if you could unmute, please. Ms. Christina Constantino. Okay, Madam President, would you like me to move on and come back to her?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, um, next person is Nicholas Distassio, if you're available, could you please unmute?
Nicholas, are you there? I do see them on the screen.
I've been meeting.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Nick, Nick Distassio. I am a history teacher at Double Hail Middle School. I also are a union rep. So we are asking that you do not vote on this issue because many other things have already been put on hold due to COVID. We have not had adequate data from Savant to, to vote on their charter. We've not done testing, so there's no actual state test scores to support their claims. On top of that, as you have mentioned to one of our previous staff members, President Rogers, you've, uh, these aren't even, uh, students of our district. And when we've asked for follow-up data, we've never gotten any, so you've never, so that's what was mentioned. On top of that, it is new, it's only TK through two. And there's, uh, no eight kids of that age at our site. All of our site is six plus. So there's a huge age discrepancy to start with, which we've already brought up. The Savant Prep has provided assessment data for only one school year to the district that will need to be carefully analyzed prior to making a decision. And because we just received the petition yesterday, we did not have time to do the analysis, uh, analysis prior to this meeting. Whilst Savant portrays the assessment data as being strong, what it shows that two of four grade levels are below expectations in ELA. And two of four grade levels were below expectations in that. Now, obviously, the pandemic has affected this, we understand, but it's affected all of our sites. And that's one of the reasons why we are requesting that this not be, uh, an issue that we take up at this time, that we are putting it off until we are having in, live in-session meetings once again. So beyond that, we have as a Double Hail site who is being, uh, told to cohabitate with this charter school. We, um, or has the largest enrollment of African-American students of any middle school, K, uh, K in San Bernardino City Unified at twenty percent for, uh, the nineteen twenty school year. The enrollment of African-American students at Double Hail is nearly double that of every other middle school in the district. Uh, and that is not matched by Savant. It's supposed to be similar, uh, demographics and Savant's demographics does not match our own. Double Hail serves high proportion of, uh, high need students. Ninety-six percent of our, our students are disadvantaged, ten percent are homeless and fifteen students with disabilities and sixteen percent are ELs. Again, this is another category that Savant fails to match us and be similar in demographics. While it is true that Savant does enroll a high percentage of African-American students, because they're focusing on the student population. Their data shows zero students with disabilities and only sixty-five, or sorry, eighty-five percent socio, socio-economically disadvantaged, four percent homeless youth and point oh seven English learner. The high need student population of Double Hail deserves more, not less. Taking classrooms and campus space away from students who need it is the most wrong. Because of COVID, this co-location is a health and safety threat to our students, both Double Hail and Savant. When school buildings reopen, uh, because of the shared use of many Double Hail, uh, spaces, including classrooms. And it will make, uh, social distancing nearly impossible for ourselves as staff members and stu, and our students to cohabitate this zone and maintain social distancing for either group. The school board needs to end or renegotiate the consisting, uh, facility agreement with Savant and uh, move them to a separate campus that is safe for their students as well as the students of that campus through the, through the end of the pandemic. So no harm comes to any of our students or theirs. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Alisa Howe, if you can unmute, please. Alisa Howe, H O W E, if you're available, please unmute.
I am looking at the screen. I don't think I see that name.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move on and come back. Um, the next one is Tiana Phipps, if you're available, can you please unmute?
I do see her.
Okay, hello, hi.
Hello.
All right, um, thank you. I just want to say thank you for, uh, taking this time to allow me to speak. Um, although there are many reasons why Savant Prep should be approved for renewal, um, I would just like to share a few. Well, first, it's abundantly clear that Ms. Tillman, the founders, the teachers, everyone at Savant Prep Academy of Business are committed, they're passionate, they're dedicated to providing quality education for our students here in San Bernardino. San Bernardino had, I'm sorry, Savant Prep has done an excellent job preparing our scholars, at the same time holding our scholars to high academic standards. And has maintained academic integrity, especially during these online academy days. I'm the parent of a fourth grader in online learning. Um, and although it's, it's new, it's challenging, Savant Prep is very, is, is preparing our students to be tech savvy. Um, and to be, uh, resilient in, in difficult times like these, like this. Um, number three, most importantly, Savant Prep Academy of Business is effective in providing outreach and information to us parents. Savant encourages and provides many opportunities for parent interaction and engagement. Savant teachers work closely with scholars and parents to help them achieve their academic goals. As well as Savant has even provided a grounding course for our grade schoolers where they were able to learn coping skills and help now skills through activities in a group setting right from their home computers. Um, Savant, I've seen the teachers in, in my daughter's fourth grade class, they, um, stayed late to make sure that every student understands the math concepts and that they're on point and on target. Um, I believe it to be a privilege for my daughter to be learning and developing here at Savant Prep Academy. And I know this is just the beginning as greater things are sure to come. Um, also, uh, when I was in middle school in, um, Christendale, California, we had South Gate Middle School come to our campus and, um, and we were, uh, predominantly African-American community school, South Gate, they were, they bussed the students to come to our school. We welcomed them with open arms, um, and, and we, we all got along. And, and we shared a campus and, and every, everybody was okay at the end of the day. So I really appreciate you guys for letting me speak. Um, thank you, um, Savant Prep, all the parents and family support, and thank you for, again, um, your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Amber Cooper. If you're available, can you please unmute?
I am. Thank you for speaking with me this evening. Um, I'd just like to start by saying that as an elementary educator, I've seen the ins and outs of public, private and charter schools over time. None of which have compared to that of Savant Prep. Entering employment here was a life-changing step for me. I've always had a passion for teaching, but it wasn't until I was immersed into the Savant Prep culture that I was truly felt as if I was becoming a part of something that was larger than a textbook education. As Savant Prep, we are challenged as educators. Our scholars understand that they have goals and expectations to meet. And despite the academic and behavioral rigor, our scholars want to succeed because of the caring and supportive foundation in which is built into every classroom. This school year, my first grade scholars have managed to facilitate a strong community together, despite the barriers that they face through the screen. On a daily basis, they stay after school, after our full day on Zoom. And they work together on homework as well as strengthen their bonds with one another. Just talking and providing each other with support during these unprecedented times. Ultimately, our scholars come to realize that their success is truly dependent on their own efforts. And through the fostering of respectful behavior and through the fostering of respectful behaviors and responsible responsibility. I'm sorry, I guess I'm emotional. Uh, our scholars are really defying the odds. Our founders are dedicated to providing our scholars with the opportunity to succeed with a rigorous curriculum and even a better opportunity in life. By renewing our contract with the school district, you're not only keeping our scholars open with their school, but you're providing them with hope and a future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Natalie Noriega. If you're available, can you please unmute?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a parent of a Savant scholar. I'd like to thank the founders of Savant. Without your vision, we would not have this opportunity to be a part of this wonderful school. From what I've witnessed, every move made by them has been carefully curated with our children in mind. The focus from the leaders of the school is clearly student-centric. From the financial literacy curriculum to incorporating purpose and leadership within my daughter's learning environment is something I believe every child needs. Concepts are being taught that weren't even touched on until my senior year in high school. As a kindergartner, my daughter is being taught about the difference between a producer and a consumer and understands the importance and purpose of budget. My son is in 11th grade and hasn't been taught these concepts. My daughter is willing and ready to teach her brother all about it. My scholar is excited about where she, what she's learning and is truly blossoming into a future leader of San Bernardino City. Thank you to all who have worked tirelessly to ensure our children's education is taught at this high of a caliber and accelerated level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lass, excuse me, Lysandra M. Jones. If you're available, can you please unmute?
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, good evening and thank you to Madam President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, and all the trustee and board members attending. Thank you all that just took out the time personally to attend this session. I'm here, obviously, as a public comment for Savant Preparatory Academy Business Charter Renewal. Um, I currently work in Higher Education Administration and at a CSU. So I have years of background in education. However, my most important critical role is a mother of a first-time kindergartner. My son is five years old and not only has perfect attendance, but thriving at Savant Academy. Um, Savant is not just another charter school with big dreams and a great idea. To not renew Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter would be to remove a pillar that has been planted and is blossoming right here in the city of San Bernardino. Representation and support matters while thriving for excellence. As a full-time working single parent, I have also made the commitment and I'm actively involved in every parent meeting, book club, school board meeting, school site council meeting. As a parent, the Savant community has been in support in offering tips, ideas, suggestions, and options on how to continue, um, how for our scholars to continue to grow and thrive when the world around us has been shut down. Meaning Savant has invested in my family and we are invested in Savant. The founders, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Reese, and Ms. Baccazar, has shaped Savant to be a school that is instilling foundation, fundamentals, and a sense of community while remaining on Zoom and socially distant. We all know that's not true. 2020 has not been kind to most, if not all of us. However, Savant teachers, administrators, and staff continues to encourage, teach at a caliber in which our kids are not being left behind. Excellent and compassion are a driving force that moves the Savant team to teach at a level that does not just check a box, go met or not met. However, it ensures our children are learning sustainable skills while applying those tools and concepts now. As a kindergarten mom, as a kindergarten mom, is learning that, you know, my son is learning that the English language arts, he's learning math, doing well. Savant is also teaching him business content and writing content and typing content. He's typing very well with learning how to read and trying to open up a business. Like you just heard about producer and consumer content. Where current schools are currently overcrowded and we hear teachers do not have time or may not care, Savant has remained engaged, supportive, and solution-oriented to every obstacle that they have been faced with, especially during 2020. Savant has learned the art of the pivot without sacrificing the quality of excellent education. For some of you voting in the future, this may not, this may just be another school up for review. For some of you voting in the future, this may feel a personal challenge as to how a school can accomplish so much in the short three-year time span. Just know that they're accomplishing greatness and they're going to continue to be a pillar of our community. Vice President Wyatt mentioned equity in social justice earlier in this evening. I took that in context as a very timely statement because education has not and is still not equitable in a lot of learning areas and geographic regions. In 2021, we think it is, but 2020, 2020 has shown this is not. And we still have a lot of steps to climb to be so strong. We often say it takes a village. In closing, I'm requesting, do not take away our village, but extend this Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter and watch how our growing generations thrive and build up our community right here in San Bernardino. Thank you all for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, let me look at my list. Um, Anjoli, A N J O L I. If you're available, can you unmute?
I do see, um, on the screen, Anjoli. I do see it, but there's not a response. I'm still on mute. Anjoli, if you're there. If not, go ahead, Karen, and then we can just follow up on it.
Okay, I'll move on and come back. Okay, our next speaker is Kiana Robinson. If you're available, can you please unmute?
Yes, good afternoon, or getting, I should say. Um, thank you for taking the time out to allow us parents and people who definitely are rooting for Savant Prep to succeed. Uh, we started, Mia, my daughter started at Savant when they opened. Um, she started in kindergarten. And honestly, it has been the best decision that one can make in my life. And I've had to make several decisions, including having kids. Um, Savant's, when they speak on excellence, I want to say Savant has surpassed it. Um, they are just so amazing. Their love and passion and dedication to our scholars. Um, I've just never seen it before. And I know I love my children, but when I say I know that Savant, um, the staff, the teachers, um, the three founders, I know for a fact that they, that they, all they want is our children to excel. Like I know that from the bottom of my heart. There's just been so many different things that I didn't even know a school had to offer until I came to Savant, until my daughter started at Savant. They, um, shocked me when, within the first week or two, they knew my daughter's first and last name alongside with all the other scholars. And to me, that stood out because it showed me that they wanted to take the time to get to my child. Um, they are just definitely a pillar in our community. And, um, I think that it would do more damage than good to not renew them. I think that we all know it, even us, a lot of us here who are saying that they're against it. The reason they're saying is because Savant is definitely probably way better than what they are. Um, but I know that, I hope and pray that, uh, my daughter can continue on with Savant. I know that, I hope and pray that my two sons will be able to go to Savant when they're of age because, um, I want them to succeed. I know that them being at Savant, they have no choice but to succeed. And with our young African-American, Latino, Asian, all ethnicities, ethnicities, in today's time, we need, we need bright, young um, scholars to shape our future. And I think that Savant definitely molding and sculpting these scholars to do, to do so. And so I just hope that you guys consider everyone talking here who's speaking positively about Savant because honestly, it's just the best thing that could have ever happened to me and my daughter. I mean, who, what school, what school requires parent hours? I mean, and I think that's the best thing that I've ever heard. You, they want their parents to be involved with the scholars schooling. And everyone knows that, you know, when your parents are involved with education, the scholar will just excel. There's, there's really no boundaries. So I just want to thank Savant for all they have done for me and my family. And by the way, my daughter has maintained being an honorable stewardess at Savant. And I'm just so proud of all the scholars there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liliana Mendez. If you're available, can you please unmute?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Uh, my name is Liliana Mendez. I'm part of the Del Vallejo ILAC. Uh, and I have my daughter, my baby, last child at Del Vallejo. And she is doing such a great job because Del Vallejo, she was able to increase her reading level to, in mathematics, because that's what she was struggling because English is our second language. And so now she's in other classes at Cajon. She's doing very well as when she came to Del Vallejo, she was not able to do those kind of problems, Mr. Hernandez. I'm very sorry to hear that he's not there no more. He was the very well teacher that was able to support us because I couldn't teach that to my child. So both of the members, please place Savant request on hold until we go back to school on campus because we cannot use our funds for outside students of our judicial, judicial district area. When, uh, because when our English learners, special education and foster students are the most vulnerable and we do not want to neglect them by putting to school in a small campus. They need our support one-to-one. We need the space in order to provide an equitable service because also our enrollment is being increased due to this is the area for poor families and there's, this is where they are immigrating. So we need your support to see where the funds are being distributed in the area where it's being fair equally, not just for one partial school, but for both. I'm not here just to pick, to speak behind, be on behalf of one part. I'm here to speak in behalf of my community, on the house where I purchased the money that I pay taxes because I believe in equality. And this is what I want, equality for all the students, all the students, English learners, special needs, foster students, they need our support. And if we do not provide that an equitable space and teachers to teach them, then we're neglecting our future. We need to build our students with a space available and with computers and with all sources that they need. And without money, we cannot do that. And we need to know where the money is going. Savannah School haven't provide the state, the state's court that they've been doing. We don't know what service they are providing, what areas they are given. We don't know if their students are from Fontana, Rialto, Bloomington, and that's not what it is. We are here to speak in behalf of San Bernardino community. And this is what I concern. And this is what I want all the board members to take in considerations. The funds that are being given by the Secretary of Education are for our, our community. San Bernardino, 92404 area, not for outside of our boundaries. So please, I call very, very lovely to hear all the beautiful things, but we need to do what is right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Hudson. If you're available, can you please unmute?
I think I saw her on the screen. Let's see.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you see?
And we can see.
Absolutely. Let's go. So, good evening to you, Madam President, and to all in attendance tonight, especially to my Savant family. I am honored to speak in support of this amazing school. I will emphasize the word "family" because that is what I have truly gained since my daughter has attended this school in September 2020. And not outside boundaries, um, it is, it's not important. My daughter is Mia Myers. She's a third-grade scholar at Savant Preparatory School of Business. And she's in Principal Tillman's third-grade class. My daughter started out, um, in a college-ready excellent elementary school since kindergarten. And usually, um, she was the only black kid in her whole class. She was the only black kid in her whole entire class. And even though she excelled in their strenuous curriculum that I feel like is, is built against black kids to accelerate, my daughter did an amazing job in the college accelerated classes. Um, but she was still missing her, her passion in school and what her passion in life was about. Um, her culture, um, wanting to be challenged more in educational, educationally wise. She wanted to be challenged more. Um, this has been an especially challenging year for teachers, parents, and students due to virtual learning. But Savant has not allowed this pandemic to interfere with their dedication and their commitment to the success of their scholars. I have several family members that started with this school when they opened in 2017. So I have witnessed for several years, um, going to award ceremonies, um, going to their Black History Program that they conducted. In 2019, I was sold. I live in Beaumont. I live 30 minutes away from this school. And although we are doing virtual learning at this point, I will be driving my child every single day to Savant, to Savant so that she could get the education, not that people want her to get, but the education that she is interested in getting. Um, their dedication to the San Bernardino community and the change in the effect that they have had on their scholars, I feel like they're my scholars now, is beyond the honor that they deserve. Now I must talk about and highlight my child's teacher. And Ms. Tillman, Principal Tillman, is extremely, extremely involved in her scholar strengths, their weaknesses, and pushes them to their fullest potential. She would not, she does not ignore the fact that they don't get it. It is her absolute passion to make sure every single one of her 23 scholars understand, get, and know exactly what she's trying to teach them. I have not found a teacher like that yet. She maintains her charismatic attitude and she has fun with her scholars. And they learn, but she is also firm, fair, and consistent. And her scholars respect her and love her for that. As they learn and as they get disciplined by their teacher, they respect their teacher. You can't find many students nowadays that if their teacher's like, oh, they're not going to respect them. That all of, all of Ms. Tillman's children respect, respect her. I, I, oh, I'm over.
Fine.
I'm.
Ms. Hudson, that's time, but you want to finish your thought?
Okay, yes. Let me wrap it up. Okay, yes. Let me wrap it up. Sorry. I had time. I'm, I'm gonna leave it in my, in my child's words, because it's not about me, it's about my child. And she said, I couldn't be more proud. My daughter, I couldn't be more proud. Ms. Tillman has taught me how to be confident. She has taught me about black history, and she has inspired me to be a black advocate and a political revolutionary. And that's all I have to say. What more can a parent ask for? Thank you so much for your guys' time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tiffany Todd. If you're available, please unmute.
Is it? Okay.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. I am in favor for the renewal of Savant to be renewed. When I first came to this school, I was skeptical, I'm not gonna lie. I'm a highly involved parent who takes pride in her child's education and who's highly involved in her child's education. The schools in my area, and I do live in San Bernardino, and I am a taxpayer. I do own my own home, and I will purchase another property, so I do pay taxes here. I did not like the school district. I didn't like anything around my area where I live to put my child in. So I was most likely gonna have to put my child either in private school or homeschool her because from what I've heard from other schools, I didn't like it. So that's the first thing I wanted to say, because when I heard about Savant and what they were, what they stood for, that they were a business school or a school who focuses on business and teaching my child, a lot of the things that I felt like me as a parent, I would have the personal teacher, I thought that was just exceptionally great. And I was really excited about that. My child is one of the first children who had attended there from kindergarten. She's now a second grader. The teachers are phenomenal. I love the way that they literally look at each individual child and they will work around to what they need. My child's very hands-on, so of course during this pandemic, she has been struggling because she wants to be in the classroom. She likes the competition. She, she loves that being around her teacher and getting praise from her teacher one-on-one. So that is kind of, you know, hard for us right now because of COVID. But when she was in school, even to, even right now, she has been on honor roll. She has made principal's honor roll. Another thing I just honestly love about this school is the fact that they are a community. And they want to involve parents into their scholars' education. Like one of the other parents said, we have to do parent hours, bias doing parent hours. My daughter loves the fact that I'm able to be there with her for field trips or, you know, participate in school activities. That just really elevates her personally, and she's thriving off that. Another thing I wanted to mention was, someone had brought up the fact that they don't want us on their campus, but what about our students? Due to COVID, it's, it's been very unfortunate. No one foreseeing COVID. I do understand they have their students to take care of, but we have students too. It was a very unfortunate situation where we had left our location before we knew COVID was gonna happen. Paperwork had already been signed and that, you know, all that stuff is done with. I don't know the ins and outs of that, because I'm not, you know, a member of this, I'm not a, a staff member. But I must say, it's unfortunate that there's people out there who don't want our children, who are hard workers, who are excellent, who are striving to be their, their best. They don't want our students there on campus. Now, you gotta think about it. Our students don't have a home to go to now, in a sense, because we were under the impression we were gonna be going to this campus. And because of that, we don't know where we're gonna go if you guys don't renew us and you don't allow us to be on this, you know, on this property. Just overall, the school is excellent. There's been so many people who have been talking about Savant Prep in a positive manner. They do so much community service for the county, the city of San Bernardino. Addition of San Bernardino County, which I think we would love. Prep brings that, when you hear the name San Bernardino County, I think about San Bernardino County in the school district. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Cheryl. No last name, so Cheryl, if you're available, please unmute.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cheryl Whistler. I am the librarian at Del Vallejo. I have been at Del Vallejo, I believe this is my twenty-fifth year. I have been in the school district working for San Bernardino City Unified for about thirty-two years, I think. I was a student at Del Vallejo in eighth grade, so I have a very long history with Del Vallejo and a vested interest in it. I want to say, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I don't do this very often. So in my thirty-two years in the district, I have not seen a staff that cares more for our students in school. I've seen them dig deep in their pockets to help those students who are in need. I want to thank the board, first of all, for taking comments. I really appreciate the tone that was set by Dr. Scott Wyatt's statement earlier. He said, oh, hold on, I wrote it down. He said, we all want justice and equity for our students. And with that in mind, I have two points, actually. I'm wondering where the equity is for San Bernardino City Unified School District students in giving Savant students financial priority. Savant students who do not receive, we do not receive ADA for because they are not within the boundaries of San Bernardino City Schools. I believe it's four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to begin, and I believe it's more than that now. That could be used for San Bernardino City Unified School District students. Further, I'm wondering how they justify giving Savant priority in assigning DV classrooms when DV itself does not have enough for our own students, assuming we return to in-class setting. There will be no room for our students to social distance because Savant is the board's priority over our own students at Del Vallejo. I believe they have eleven classrooms. Let's see, Savant. And they don't currently have the enrollment to warrant the number of classrooms that they have been allocated. I believe it's eleven in all, and I believe that there's going to be a request for more. Now, I have no doubt that Savant is a good school and it's a good place for students and parents. But I believe that there's a trade-off that has to be made here, and it will create an injustice and an inequity for DV students and for San Bernardino City Unified School, uh, students because of the money that is being funneled to this charter school, as well as the space that's going to take up on our campus. With that, I would like the board to hold off on Savant's renewal until we can all return to DV in person so that we can see how, you know, how this is all gonna work. And ultimately, you know, our goal, I know the, the people that I work with, our focus and our priority is for our students. We do care about our students, and we are trying to make sure that we advocate for them so they get the best of the resources that should be allocated for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Grace, Grace Beatty. If you're available, please unmute. President Rogers, I understand that she's got to dial in, so it might take her a couple seconds.
Okay, yeah, I don't see on this screen.
She's calling in, I believe.
Got it.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and move on.
Yeah, if you don't have her on the line, or if she calls in, if we can just put her on hold.
Okay. All right, so our next.
Hello, do you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Is it you, Ms. Beatty? Yes, we see you now.
I am Grace Beatty. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues for being brave enough to emerge out of the shadows. I am a union rep at Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy. I have taught here for over twenty years, and I have lived in this community for more than twenty-five years. I am here to give my comments tonight as a concerned citizen as well. First, there really is not a lot of trust between us. Therefore, I am compelled to ask, what are your reasons for changing this platform? Correct me if I am wrong, but there may be legal issues here depending on intent. There might be serious questions concerning free speech because this platform is paid for by taxpayers for our benefit and convenience, especially during COVID. Staff has been stonewalled and kept in the dark for nearly a year. We have waited patiently for documentation that has never materialized. Perhaps we should send our written comments to the media because clearly this board does not hear our message. This board continues to favor this charter school with little or no documentation of its success. Furthermore, there is a charter housed in cathedral of praise a stone's throw away from Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy. Initially, members of this board and cabinet claimed Savant was part of our district. That was not true. Then you told our staff that it was a mistake not to seek parent, student, staff, and community input about housing and elementary charter on the middle school campus. I said then, and I reiterate now, it is only a mistake if you are willing to correct it and do better. Members of this board claim that Dr. Mitchell had not been transparent. Yet this board continues to disregard our concerns for our students and their families, especially during a pandemic. We cannot spare the space. Currently, our politicians are debating whether to pass President Biden's relief bill, one that will give families an additional fourteen hundred dollars because people are suffering. In our community, in our country, eight million kids on any given night don't have food to eat, and twenty-nine million adults. Del Vallejo serves multiple populations of high-need students. Ninety-six percent of our students are socio-economically, economically disadvantaged. Ten percent homeless, sixteen percent English learners, and over fifteen percent with disabilities. Savant has little to no students enrolled with disabilities to this day, none. This board gifted almost a half a million dollars. Several classrooms, including our entire special education building, to a board member's daughter for her charter school, Savant. Do you know how many students in this community go to bed hungry? Do you know how many families have been addicted to this date? It bears repeating, I live in this community, and I see furniture set out by dumpsters at apartments every weekend. The students at Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy need this board to put them first, to care about them, to understand the challenges they face day and night. Where is the empathy? That nearly a half a million dollars would have been better used to serve the needs of the students in this community rather than the small population of Savant students from outside our district. Why this community, where students are already economically disadvantaged? Clearly, based on the testimonials, Savant may thrive anywhere. Therefore, find a more suitable location. The school board needs to postpone renewing Savant's charter or renegotiate the existing facilities agreement with Savant. Move the charter to a more suitable location and refrain from being frivolous with taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Laguna. If you're available, please unmute now.
Good afternoon, school board members and all the guests. I'm in favor to renew Savant. I'm speaking as a staff of Savant Preparatory Academy. The first time I stepped foot on campus, I realized the impact the school has done for the San Bernardino County. As a substitute teacher, I've stepped in different schools, and I've never met anyone so passionate about their school. Gia, Jeanette, and Eva have a vision for this school and have come a long way from where they started in such a short amount of time. Just imagine what else the founders would have been able to do. With the impact of COVID has done with Savant, has made sure each and every student have all the materials they have and need to assure success. Where school who generally care about each student, each student knows how much the teachers care for them. Savant is focusing, focused on financial literacy. We want students to not only succeed, but to have financial stability. But not only that, which fourth grader is learning how to write college essay papers? Savant students, that's who. Savant is not only a school, we are a family. From the comments of another parent, she drove thirty minutes to Savant. Which student, which parent does that? That means that can tell you the importance of Savant. With Del Vallejo, we're not taking anyone's space. We're only using rooms that we're not using before. Even before COVID, these rooms were not being used. We didn't take any of the students' rooms. Our students deserve the same space as anyone else. We inspire all students to become more than just a student. We inspire them to become leaders. I ask you with much respect to renew our school. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is.
Thank you.
Tiffany Hood. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Hood. I am a teacher, avid, and English Language Arts at Del Vallejo Middle School. I've been a teacher here in this district for about twenty-three years. I am speaking on behalf of myself and some of the shared comments from some of my other colleagues. Our great, my greatest concern, as we've discussed on our site, is that of our students. We acknowledge that the pandemic has made it difficult to assess students in all schools in all areas, including Savant. But we also realize that as you prepare for your vote at some point, that hopefully more analysis will be done on the data that is being provided. Del Vallejo serves a high, has high proportions of students with high needs. We, again, it's been mentioned, have a lot of students with social, who are socially, economically disadvantaged, who are homeless, students with disabilities, and English learners. We are looking to, and we know that our district or our students need our support from the community, from the teachers, as well as from the district. The high-needs student population that Del Vallejo serves deserves more, not less. It appears that we're at this point taking away from Del Vallejo students. The students have a need for those special ed rooms and for the other classrooms. To take a special ed building where we have a high population of special education students away from our students to give to a school who has no special ed students seems quite concerning. The other thing is, it seems to create a greater inequity for our students. We are trying to build our students up just as they are, but we don't want to have to lose anything for our students in the process. Another really large concern at this point is, yes, we understand that some of these, these decisions were made prior to the pandemic and no one could foresee it coming. But I am asking that you withhold any votes on renewing this charter or renewal of, or any requests by Savant until after the schools and the district has gone back to, has gone back onsite and in, and into in-person business in the district. The great concern is, we have some large classes. If we have lost classrooms, if there is the need, as is suspected, that we continue to do some distancing and reduction in class sizes to safely return, we will not have the space to do that safely for our students or for the staff who are working with them and trying to help and build up our students to help them be successful. So once again, I ask that you withhold your vote until we are back in the district with district business, district classrooms, and everyone back on campuses. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is first name only, Leah. Leah, if you're available, please unmute.
Yes, good evening, board. I want to request the hold upon the school's Savant renewal. This is because vaccines are out, which relates to students going back to school. If Savant is placed in the school Del Vallejo, the students that live in the area would have to be transferred to a new school. Most guardians won't have the time to take their child to a school that's far from where they live. Also, school buses don't pick up children that are being transferred. This would affect the students' academic studies, and Del Vallejo has taught me so well that now I'm an IB student and an advanced placement. They prioritize their students so much. The teachers there had stayed with me after school to help me understand their curriculum. Now I am thriving in school due to their excellent teachings. We also have to keep in mind our safety precautions. As students, we don't want to be at risk of getting the virus. How do we know if the younger kids would follow the safety precautions? According to the Harvard Health Publishing, it's hard to tell when a child has COVID-19, and it could be life-threatening to them. And they should also be limited to being around other children. How would we be able to limit our surroundings when two schools are being placed at a small campus? We should take into consideration the health of all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jacqueline Jones. If you're available, please unmute now. I don't see that name on the screen either. Okay, I'll go ahead and move on and come back. Our next speaker is Britannia. If you're available, will you please unmute? I'm not seeing. Not seeing her. Okay, let me move to the next one. All right, I'm starting to cycle over to the ones that didn't respond. Yes, Christina Constantino, are you available now? Okay. Lisa Howe, are you available? Okay. And Jolie? Are you available? Yeah, let me see. And then we're back to Jacqueline Jones. Okay, and I didn't see those names with the exception of Angelie, but it still was showing mute, so. Okay, and then Britannia, that's it. So I'm assuming they're not available. Okay, thank you so much for navigating us through the comments. And so, board, again, as I said at the beginning, this is a public hearing. So we will not be taking any action or voting on anything. This is a public hearing where we hear information. Is there anything else the board have any questions or comments or clarifications before I close the public hearing? And I'm not seeing anything in the chat, but I know.
We, President.
And don't forget the video, ma'am. Oh, yes, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay, we can go ahead and then move to that. And I'll watch from their board members. I will watch the chat to see if anything comes up from you all. Okay, we can move into the presentation. Video.
Challenging and fun?
Engaging, relevant, and impactful.
These kids want to be there. They want to be at school. They want to participate. They want to raise their hands. They want to get those grades. They want to be successful. And I think that's because of that excellence that they're instilling in the children. And to me, if anyone who wants my daughter to be the best she can be, I appreciate you because that means they have the same goal that I do.
My name is Eva Tillman, and I am principal and co-founder of Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. When you decide to become a charter school, you have to identify a unique focus that is different from any school within that community. And so for us here at Savant Prep, we wanted our students to have a unique focus on financial literacy and entrepreneurship.
I'm the CEO of Lollipop Slip Drop.
The name itself, Lollipop Slip Drop, was made by Malaya and Ms. Tillman together. When she said the lip gloss, there was like a light bulb that kind of went off. And that night, she began to plan out what would end up being this amazing business that she runs on her own.
She's telling me that I got to go home and get rest because I got school in the morning, and she's looking forward to it. And so when we're just riding along in the car, she starts a conversation with me, and she's like, so who's the mayor? I'm like, who's the mayor? So I tell her who the mayors are. She says, hmm. I think I want to be the mayor. I have to believe that through her instruction, through her engagement with her teacher on a different subject matter that you all provide, she has retained this and put it together to formulate this question and this inquiry into political involvement on a mayoral status.
And I was excited because they had a library, but they needed more. I said, give me a list. What do you need? What do you want? I promise you, whatever you need and what you want, you will get. Why? Because I want those future students to have what they want. I want the first or second black female president to come out of your program. I want that engineer, that astronaut, to come out of your program. So we have worked the last two years to make sure that whatever they need, that they will get.
Hi, my name is Gia Reese, Director of Operations and co-founder of Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. As a parent of a Savant Prep scholar, parents play an intricate role in the development of the program. I've had an experience where at other schools, students are identified by a student number, but I make it a personal point as the Director of Operations to ensure that I know all students by their name, whom they're connected to, who their parents are. For some of our parents, it is very important for them to know that when they drop their scholars off, that they are dropping them off to someone that cares about their student.
After talking in detail with Ms. Reese, and she guaranteed my child that she don't have to worry, that they will wrap their arms, you know, of protection and be for certain that the child is safe at all times, and that was just the icing on the cake.
So it's so much more than just an education. You know, my daughter has grown so much personally in every single class because they see who she is, and they're willing to wrap their arms around her, but push her and promote her to go forward. And that's the love and care that our black children need.
Considering the experience that I have had with other schools, I am happy to be amongst my colleagues where everyone in the building love their students, want their students to succeed, where everyone in the building put the students' needs before their own, where everyone in the building want excellence for their student.
My name is Jeanette Valkazar. I am Director of Curriculum and Instruction and co-founder for Savant Prep Academy of Business. At Savant Prep, we provide resources for minorities to thrive and find their sense of purpose. We're blessed to have a large population of African-American students in which we have taken the time and dedication to just embrace diversity.
We're a biracial couple with biracial children, and they went to a predominantly white school. They weren't getting exposure to diversity.
When she transferred from the school she was at before to Savant, we immediately saw a change in her temperament for school. Like, there was an excitement because she could relate to people who were there, not only in her classroom at peer level, but also the people that were teaching her.
They teach us about more parts of black history. Like, at other schools, they don't tell us the whole story. But at Savant, they make it clear about the stories.
Why is that important to you?
Because we need to learn about not just some history, we need to learn about all of it. With George Floyd's death, like, I tried to talk to them, except they didn't really understand what I meant at all. Except with Savant, I can relate to people, and they understand what I mean because they've gone through it.
During the pandemic has been, in one word, flawless. Another word could be seamless. We are serving our scholars through the screen. It'd be the same integrity with the same intensity and with the same rigor we had on campus. Being the kindergarten teacher, we have been able to transition our kinders from two hours a day to now five full hours on Zoom. No complaints, no naps, no crying. We are ready. They understand the expectation, and they meet the expectation.
Every day, I really appreciate the creativity that goes into the curriculum to be online with kindergarteners and to keep them engaged and happy. I mean, just something that blows me away because they are not online for a short amount of time. So they're online for several hours, and throughout that time, they're interacting with their teacher. They're excited about interacting with each other. They're really engaged in what they're learning. Their teacher is singing with them. They are up dancing and moving, and it is all purposeful. My child has a good time, but I even have a good time sometimes listening. So when I get a chance to listen, and I hear a song and a little bit of beat happening, I'm like, yes, this is cracking.
It was said that it could not be done. It was said that students could not walk in straight lines, black students at that. It was said that black students could not pay attention in class and listen and be successful. But we are proving those people wrong.
Savant's the reason that we still live here. If it wasn't for Savant, we would have moved out of the area. But because of Savant, and because I want him and my youngest to have their first part of their education, hopefully more than that, at Savant, we're here still.
Familia. Familia, porque realmente eso es lo que Savant Preparatoria nos ha hecho sentir como padres. Que somos una familia, que estamos enfocados en la educación de los niños. Y agradezco a Ms. Tillman, agradezco a Ms. Valkazar, agradezco a Ms. Reese por ese sueño que ustedes tuvieron y lo están compartiendo con nuestros niños. Y me y me da me llena de orgullo de ver cómo están preparando a estos niños. Gracias por su sueño y gracias por compartirlo con nuestros niños del futuro.
We have birthed something that we were dreaming of. Children that were told that they couldn't succeed are successful. So success is Savant Prep. Woo! And I feel like, provided the opportunity, every child that we touch is going to be successful. Whoa! Didn't expect that one.
One plus one is two.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. And I am not seeing anything else in the chat at this time. So again, thank you for all your comments, and thank you again for the presentation and all of the speakers tonight. I am now moving into, I thought I heard something, no. We're moving now to six point one, to our public comments.
President, I do have a few questions. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Miles.
Thank you. That was a really great presentation, by the way. Thank you so much for sharing, and thank you to the public for all that great input. I just have a couple of questions, I guess, for Cabinet in regards to some information that I can maybe review on Savant. So like, I would be, I didn't have a clue that we had a charter school, you know, Savant in our district, prior to, you know, a couple months back. But I would like to get more information on maybe like number of enrolled students, total number of enrolled students. I did hear that it was a brand-new charter school, three-year recent charter school. Maybe number of students that come from outside, so like all of that data, demographic information on their student population. And then also, it would be a good opportunity for me to be able to see and understand how the district does their monitoring of charter schools in general. And specifically for Savant, maybe, you know, how is Savant monitored? And are other charter schools monitored in the same way? Maybe get that information. And and maybe a copy of, you know, the goals. I don't know how that works. So whatever goals the charter school has, and then, you know, what the progress has been. And I know that, as I've heard various comments already, that there has been, you know, COVID, and it's, you know. So I do understand that there might be some challenges with that. So yeah, if, you know, I can get some of that information, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Abios and Dr. Volkmer. Were you capturing that? And I know if there was anything else, Ms. Hopwood was also online as well.
Madam President, I also have a question.
No, I see you in the chat. I just wanted, I know Myra's trying to get clear and trying to get up to speed. So I wanted to be clear for her as well. Okay, so now that we have that, there is, Dr. Flores, you are in the chat.
Yes, and I think this question is for Dr. Volkmer. What is the timeline, Dr. Volkmer, for the board to, for approval of renewals?
I don't know that off the top of my head, Dr. Flores, but I believe Mrs. Hopwood is on the call this evening. Is that correct? She may be able to give us the specifics. I know there's a prescribed timeline. I just don't know the exact dates.
She's there, Ms. Hopwood.
Good evening, board. I am Mrs. Hopwood, and I'm happy to provide all the information that's been requested thus far. Also, we do have a timeline that once the petition is turned in, we do have ninety days. And at this point in time, we will have to call a vote on March 2nd. So I'll provide all of that information, including our findings, which will be posted fifteen days prior to the vote.
When you say findings, Ms. Hopwood, what do you mean?
So there are strict guidelines that we have to follow when we're renewing, including the new law that's related to the academic portion. So we will be providing all of that information to the board. And it's also vetted with all of our staff. We have included directors from all departments to chime in and review the petition that's been submitted. So we will comb through that and provide the staff's findings.
Are those the fifteen or sixteen criteria that they have to meet?
Yes.
Okay, so they, okay. And will the board get this prior, not on the night of March the 2nd? But how early will we get the report?
Yes, so the report will come to you as soon as possible. It's currently being prepared by our attorneys with the staff input. And I do have some information here from Suki. She says ninety days is the total time, and that we can agree to an extension. She says ninety days is the total time and that we can agree to an extension um if it's needed by mutual agreement. Um there are some new requirements, as I mentioned before, and we will be looking over those new requirements and providing that information. The findings um will be posted fifteen days prior to the vote for public um information.
And then I have a couple other questions. We've had several uh staff members um make uh comments and um and their concerns regarding um the facility and so forth. And um I would like you to follow up with them uh to get more specific clarification uh from the staff and also the parents. Uh and I also, you know, I, I, I appreciate Savant's um uh mission and goals. Uh it, it clearly shows that they are very family oriented, very student oriented, very success oriented. And I do want them to succeed, but I also want us to be fair to everyone. Um you know, in terms of, I guess, the issue that I see is the site location. Could you ask our attorneys if um, you know, um and I don't know, I haven't seen if Savant want, is, has projected growth? If they have projected growth? I know that it, this is a five-year uh renewal, so I haven't seen it and I don't know what their projected growth is. So um and I don't even know if the site that they're at would even handle uh their growth. Uh so I, I would like you to look into that as well, because I haven't seen it, so I really don't know what it is. Um have you given us that? Have you given us their, their um, their renewal uh contract? Have we gotten that, Ms. Uh?
Not yet.
Yeah, see, so I don't, there's a lot of questions that I have about that, so. Did you get all of my questions?
I did. I got them all.
And please ask our attorney. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. On board, are there any other information? Thank you, Ms. Hopwood, for that clarification, so that everyone knows what stage we're at right now and um you'll be presenting. Then it, not only will we receive that information, but the charter school will also be aware as well. Um Dr. Volkmer, where, did you have something else you wanted to add? I see you off mute. I know you are, I had requested you meeting with um the school site as well, so so that their questions are being answered along the way, and I think that is happening.
Great, thank you. You know, we're happy to provide that information for you uh board and we'll continue to uh get clarity about questions that the staff has and, and do our best to get those answers back to them.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you, um Dr. Flores and Ms. Sabios. And I'm not seeing anyone else off mute and a comment. Okay, thank you again. All right, I am going to read public comments. Is the time during the agenda?
Madam President?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um did we get Mr. Tillman back into the meeting now?
Um if, if no one's called him, I would.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure.
No, I, 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 I can, okay, hey. Or, or the VP, but I'll, I'll go ahead to it right there. Let's see.
Madam President and Madam Vice President.
Yes.
I mean, uh Mr. Vice President, I'm sorry. Sorry, Dr. Wyatt. I just thought one other thing, uh Dr. Volkmer, if you don't mind adding to your list. I, I, I hope you can just uh speak, get a chance to speak with the Devil L staff uh uh just to see if they have the space they need to run their program.
Happy to do that, Dr. Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so we will continue to, to gather information, because communication is very important, so we wanna want to do that. And thank you, Dr. Volkmer, for being diligent about that. I don't see Mr. Tillman coming in just yet, so he should, let's see. And then um do, I don't, I know we are, we are using the new process, so did we clear out all of our previous speakers? I don't want to get ahead of communication. I know they.
Yeah, no, we did finish all those, but we have one public comment. Um.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna read that and I'm just making sure that the, we're back on the line clear, because I know people will jump out. Often, they still can continue to watch the board meeting. Um but if they've made their comments, I think they, they log out. Did, was Mr. Tillman back in? Did I see him come in on the screen yet? No. Thank you, Carla. That would be Mr. Tillman. I, he, he's definitely back. I know that ringtone. Okay, public comments is the time during the agenda when the board is prepared to receive comments from the public within their subject matter jurisdictions such as policies, regulations, and procedures of the district, comments on program services or operations of the district, or fiscal matters of the district. You may address your comments for specific, to specific items on the agenda. However, this is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda. Pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N twenty-nine twenty dated March seventeen twenty twenty, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. If you would like to make a live comment at district board meetings, a registration form is required. Forms can be found on the district's website and Facebook. This regulation form is available twenty-four hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and will close at four thirty on the day of the meeting. Public comments are still limited to five minutes per person. A timer will be visible on the screen during your comments. Participants are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right, Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, we only have one public speaker and her name is Gabby, no last name. If Gabby's available, please unmute now.
And I'm looking through to see. I do not see a Gabby on the screen.
Okay.
All right.
And that will be it, Madam President.
Okay, thank you so much. And we are now going to move to seven point O, reports and comments by union organizations. And seven point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, President Rogers.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Vice President Wyatt, Interim Superintendent Volkmer and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Vita Salcollo, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the three thousand members of SBTA. Tonight, I would first like to recognize that this first week of February is National School Counseling Week. This year's theme is All In For All Students. And SBTA would like to take a moment to recognize and sincerely thank all of the dedicated school counselors in SBCUSD who worked tirelessly to support our students each and every day. Thank you for your service. Since you last met, the COVID nineteen numbers in the school district and county have finally started to slowly decline. And the state has lifted the stay-at-home order only because the, the projected increase over the next three weeks in ICU capacity is, actually, it's it projected to decline over the next three weeks within our Southern California region. But even though the stay-at-home order has been lifted, our numbers still keep us firmly in the purple tier, which means that COVID is still widespread throughout San Bernardino County. Also of note, in the two weeks since the board last met in January, the case numbers for our children ages five to nineteen within our district boundaries has increased by another three hundred cases, bringing the total children affected by COVID in our district closer to five thousand total cases. Although we're seeing a glimmer of hope as the vaccines are being distributed throughout the state, we are still waiting for educators to be able to access the vaccine in San Bernardino County. We know that Riverside is already um providing vaccines to those in Tier One B, which educators are a part of, but we are anxiously awaiting for San Bernardino County to come on board. And we are working with the district to find out if those vaccination clinics will be offered on, at our sites to our employees. And as these case numbers are starting to gradually decline, we still must be vigilant to continue to do our part to flatten the curve. And I again want to thank the board for their commitment to their decision to continue distance learning through the end of the school year. I would also like to let the board know that SBTA has been meeting with the district in good faith since October to negotiate a success for, successor COVID MOU. While we are very close, we were still not able to come to an agreement prior to its expiration on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I am hopeful that by the time the board meets again in two weeks, that this issue will have been resolved. Tonight, the board also held a hearing on the charter renewal application for Savant Prep Academy. And as you heard from our courageous members from the site, we are in an unprecedented COVID pandemic. And due to that, there still remain numerous health and safety concerns for the board to consider in relation to the renewal and the current facilities agreement in relation to the co-location on the Devil Lho campus. And due to these threats, we expect the board to, to relocate them if they're able to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we are at seven point two, California School Employees Association. Is there someone on the line?
Madam President, Vice President, Dr. Wyatt, board members, staff and faculty. It is truly an honor to speak before you this evening. Uh I am Bernadelle's Environmental Compliance Technician for the District.
I'm sorry, but we can't hear you.
How's that? You, you better now?
Yes.
Okay. I am Bernadelle's Environmental Compliance Technician for the District. I've worked for the district now for approximately six years. I also am the Chief Stewart for CSEA Chapter one eighty-three, representing approximately two thousand bargaining unit members. And I'm also honored to do that. Over the past year, CSEA and the administration have negotiated many MOUs in the average to create a better working environment for the employees. We are working diligently to achieve this goal, although we have not, although we may not see eye to eye on every subject, but through hard work, we do endure and we work through our issues. However, I am concerned when the efforts of this administration and CSA put forth are taken for granted. One manager can affect and disrupt all that hard work that this administration and CSA put forth. I cannot tell this board nor this administration how to operate, but a manager who would undermine all the great things that this administration and CSA does should not be tolerated. Uh currently, CSEA and this administration have been working for approximately one month on a return-to-work MOU. One sticking point is hazardous pay. Although counties have partially uh reopened, because our numbers are declining, we must remember it wasn't the lack, it was the lack of bed space in our emergency rooms that landed us where we are. And those numbers are, have not adjusted much. There are many employees working in district, most are at home. However, those who are working must be such essential workers. They come to work daily, risking their health and the health of their families. If this is the case, those workers should be compensated for that risk. Lastly, it has been almost a year now that we have gone through this pandemic. I would like to say job well done to the school police department, warehouse, nutrition services, and this administration, which has worked tirelessly through this pandemic. I know I'm leaving out someone and I apologize, but you all should be applauded. Our campus security officers are currently ramping up to go back to campuses to secure our campuses and district properties. Both the police and security departments keep us safe and protect the district's employees, properties and assets. In that same vein, we should do all we can to keep them safe and provide for them the assurance and confidence that this board and administration has their back, as they've always had ours. We're all one big team and we all have, we all have to respect that. Here's a quote from Phil Jackson. "The strength of a team is each individual member. The strength of the, each member is the team." Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Moving now to seven point three, Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative?
Uh yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen and honorable board members and cabinet. This is Teresa Hunter with CWA nine five eight eight. Um first of all, I'd like to thank you for memorializing two of our guest teachers who uh have transitioned in the last uh month or so. And uh we will miss them because they were well-known uh in, in our uh, in the, the group of guest teachers. Um anyway, uh coming up, the informational town hall coming up on February ninth will be of great interest to us because we're looking forward to getting our guest teachers back to work as soon as possible like everyone else. Um we know that there's a lot of questions out there still about getting vaccinated. Uh who can, who will, who won't, who doesn't want it, all these types of things. Uh I've received a lot of questions personally from guest teachers. Um there's a lot of opinion out there, so we're looking forward to this uh upcoming town hall on February ninth. So thank you so much and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is someone present tonight? Looking. Any representative? No? Okay, I will then move to eight point O presentation, eight point one, our academic achievement update from our district. Looking forward to that. So Dr. Volkmer, are you gonna queue them up?
Great. Thank you, President Rogers. Uh board, based on, on your request uh earlier in the school year, we're bringing back student achievement data uh centered on both Ds and Fs uh and attendance. And what we'll cover this evening will be um the entire district in terms of attendance and giving you an uh an update on where our attendance figures are. Uh for Ds and Fs, we're going to revisit uh what we shared with you before, which was our first quarter grades, and then compare them to our first semester or second quarter grades. Just at the middle school level, we were gonna try to do both middle school and high school and it just got to be a little bit too large of a presentation, so we're gonna split it in two. Uh we've also prepared, as you see that comparative data, you'll notice, you'll notice that it has come down some. Uh and we wanted to prepare a video that gives you an inside look at what our teachers and support staff are doing to provide support to our students during distance learning in order to increase achievement and lower the number of Ds and Fs. As I mentioned, we do have a, a, a decline uh in the number of Ds and Fs. We're happy with the decline, but we're certainly not satisfied uh with the overall result and we will continue to work very diligently and deliberately in terms of making our kids more successful. And as I mentioned, we'll provide a similar presentation to this one for high school data on February sixteenth. I want to thank our team uh for preparing the presentation. Uh a lot of time goes into these, these presentations. We know they uh, you know, sometimes appear to come off flawlessly, but there, this is probably the sixth, seventh, eighth iteration of the presentation. By the time you've seen it, we, we, we dig in, chew on it, get some input, get some feedback. And so I want to thank our team. I want to give a special shout out to all of those uh teachers and some of whom you'll see uh this evening. Uh and, and other support staff that are going way above and beyond to help our students be successful. We're very thankful for all you're doing. And you'll see some shining examples in, of this in the video this evening. So I believe I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel to get us started and then Anna and um uh Dr. Rodriguez will uh share the data with you. Rachel, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Um if we can get the presentation pulled up, please? Thank you. Well, good evening, um men, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board members, community um and staff. Thank you for our opportunity to um share what has been going on academically as Dr. Volkmer said, shared um in SBCUSD for the school year in the area of grades and attendance. Next slide. As Dr. Volkamer said, shared in SBCUSD for the school year in the area of grades and attendance. Next slide, please. So tonight we have four objectives. You will receive updates on our COVID cases to date, both county and school district. We are happy to say that they are starting to dip, not enough, but they're we're starting to at least trend in a different direction. And then the core of the presentation this evening will be the DNF rates for semester one at our middle schools. Again, high schools will be shared next board meeting. You will receive an update on our attendance to date. And that will that that attendance will be for all of our schools kindergarten or TK through twelfth grade. As well as chronic absenteeism. And then finally, you will hear next steps for our SBCUSD accelerated student achievement plan. We've changed the. The name a little bit so we can call it SBCUSD ASAP. And so Ms. Applegate will share a bit about where we're going to be going with that. Next slide, please. So board, a quick recap of last board meeting on January nineteenth. That was the first time where you welcomed live comments from the public since March twenty twenty. And so you delivered on a promise to improve communication with your constituents. To be commended. So thank you for that support in that area. During that same board meeting, we. The governor's budget proposal had been shared, and so. We are in a better position than previously anticipated for this year and next, but we still have to be cautious. Because there will be deficit deficits moving into future years as well as the projected enrollment challenges. Third, big occurrence on January nineteenth, you reaffirmed. Your decision to stay in distance learning and opted not to pursue the governor's safe schools for all grant proposal. So we thank you for that. And as you know, the governor and the legislature put a pause on that as well. So you were once again forward thinking. As a board. And then finally, you expressed a commitment to work with our local healthcare partners. To educate individuals and to partner with public health. To make the COVID nineteen vaccination available to the community. And so we will give you a brief update on what's going on with the vaccines. And you heard. Our our president for CWA mentioned a town hall, so we'll share a bit about that. Next slide, please. So quickly, board, these continue to be the guiding principles during this pandemic. Ensure health and physical safety of students and staff. We still maintain that new guidance comes out or updates to that. And we are preparing to offer small group instruction when. Or small group in person when you deem it safe to do so, making sure we're adhering to federal, state, and county guidelines. Tonight, we're going to hone in and focus on providing high quality learning experiences and what that means. For our scholars specifically in our middle schools. And then doing that while providing safe and accessible working conditions. So these continue to be your guiding principles, and we are appreciative of your leadership. Next slide. And then finally, board, just to keep anchoring back to our progression of instructional models. We continue to stay in phase one, distance learning for all. We are our we stay in phase one. Through the end of this school year, per your decision on and your action on November seventeenth. And we will offer when you deem it safe to do so, small group phase two supports for students. That would be identified, but we're not there yet. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Vatier, who will go through some COVID data data for you. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Monares. Good evening, board, cabinet, and community. I'll show you on the next slide our weekly COVID case rate. Just as a reminder. We do continue to remain in the purple tier. We are way above the seven. New cases per day that we need to have to fall into the next tier down. Next slide, please. In the latest seven day report period, January seventeenth through the twenty third. We started to observe a slight decrease in our new reported cases within the county and our district boundaries. The cities of San Bernardino and Highland have only begun flattening, both exceeding last week's new case numbers this week. Hundred and eighty eight new cases in children and just under thirteen hundred new cases in the community were reported within our district boundaries. Within our boundaries, we have continued to maintain the second highest number of new community cases since the beginning of the pandemic. Cases in children are also at the second highest of any San Bernardino County district at a total of four hundred, four thousand, six hundred cases. In the next couple of slides, I'll provide you an update on the vaccinations. Next slide, please. So the state has launched a vaccinate all fifty eight campaign. They've also launched a webpage, myturn.ca.gov. Where individuals can register for notifications and see where which tier they may fall within. Three point five million doses have been administered statewide. With each person needing two doses each, this means that only about one point seven million Californians can currently. Receive both doses. As you know, being the largest in the nation, San Bernardino County has over two million residents alone. To date, only hundred and seventy thousand vaccines have been provided to our county. Today, the county stood up a super site at the Fontana Speedway and donated, I'm sorry, distributed. Thirty five hundred first dose vaccinations, appointments filled up within twenty minutes of opening online. Demand for vaccinations outpaces the current supply. We are currently partnering with the Department of Public Health by hosting a larger vaccine site currently reserved for second doses only at a Royal Valley High School. The Department of Public Health, Loma Linda University. And Borrego Health have all expressed interest in standing up additional vaccination locations. To meet the needs of our students, families, and employees using our schools once the vaccines are available. As the tiers progress and doses become available, we will continue to message to our families and employees. In knowing that our district is a trusted source of information to our community, we will be hosting a virtual town hall meeting. On February ninth from six to eight PM. Where doctors from Loma Linda University, Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. Including a member of the county's vaccination task force will provide an update and take questions from our families and employees on the vaccines. Next slide, please. And board, finally, as I explained in the previous slide. You can see the tiers and availability for us and surrounding counties are still focused primarily on healthcare. First responders and those age sixty five and older. And that's your update for COVID this evening. Thank you, President Rogers and board for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Ds and Fs look like it's the next.
Next slide, please. Good evening, President Rogers and Vice President Wyatt. Board, Dr. Volkamer, Cabinet. As Dr. Volkamer mentioned, I'm going to be circling back to some of the data that was brought forth back in December. So we brought a report on our Ds and Fs around our chronically absent students. And at the time you requested that we bring back DNF data on all of our students. So what you will be seeing tonight are the first quarter progress report grades. As compared to the first semester grades for all of our students. And as Dr. Volkamer mentioned, we're going to be focusing on middle school. This time so that we can also bring you a comprehensive report at the high school level. So next slide. So what you see here, board, is now a comparison with the blue graph, the blue bar. The first quarter grades as compared to the orange bar, which are semester grades. And as you can see, there was a little dip in the district overall. Of students that are receiving Ds and Fs in English Language Arts in middle school. And across the board, you can see our different student groups that the trend continues. That the Ds and Fs are dipping, which is what we'd like to see for all our middle school students in ELA, English Language Arts. Next slide. You will notice there's a similar result in mathematics. We do have a slight dip overall, and then you can see our student groups. Where all the other dips are. Again, this is a trend that we want to see, but as Dr. Volkamer mentioned, there's still a lot of work to do. But we are moving in the right direction, as you can see. And a little bit later on in the presentation, you will see some very specific processes, systems. Of protocols and activities that have contributed to the reduction in Ds and Fs. Next slide. So now Dr. Rodriguez is going to take you through some slides to speak to attendance.
So we know that it is a board priority that students go to school because we know that's where the learning happens. And so we've taken diligent efforts to have students come back to school. And so we wanted to give you an update on how we are doing. In our district, you can see that we aren't doing as well as we were doing last year. That is to be expected as we are unable to actually see students, students are not coming to school. Physically, and so they do have many obstacles that they are encountering in their home environments. And so you will see across the board that we do have. Less students coming to school. But it is not that far off. Our biggest dip. Is at the high school level where we're seeing a four percent decrease from last year in regards to their attendance. Next slide, please. As always, we know that the that the board is interested in looking at our specialized student groups. Understanding that each group has their unique needs. And we are working to make sure that we are able to meet their needs. And as you can see by this, our attendance rate across the board consists of. You know, we do see a dip in our attendance, specifically to note, we know that we have. A dip in our African American student attendance, looking at a five point one percent. Drop. And then looking at our homeless youth at a six percent drop. And so these are populations that we are aware of and are continuously diligently working to recover their attendance. Next slide, please. And then we were also asked to look at chronic absenteeism by level. And as you can see, we have showcased here district, elementary, middle, and high. We are missing our continuation school data because they are calculated at a different rate. They don't have the same schedule. As our regular comprehensive high schools. And you will see there that we do have. Great numbers of students who are chronically absent. Overall, in the district, we have increased our chronic absent students by seven percent. And we have most notes looking at our elementary school students as an increase of a nine percent. And so we do understand and Dr. or Mr. Chilman made note that. There are different challenges from pandemic situations that we need to look at, and we are working on that as well. Next slide, please. And then as we look at chronic absenteeism across the board with our student groups. You will see that we have, which is to be expected, our homeless youth. Having increased numbers of chronic absenteeism. As well as we made note across the district, looking at the attendance. Our African American students are also struggling with chronic absenteeism. A little later in the presentation, we'll discuss some of the safety nets and interventions that we've put into place. To continue to work on bringing our most. Needy students to come back to school virtually. Next slide, please.
So board, we're going to present to you a couple of middle schools that have done a fantastic job. In having systems and processes in place that have really fit into our five core principles of distance learning. I had shared this framework with you in the past, and we're really trying to make a very deliberate concerted effort. To help our site administrators and our staff understand what some effective practices are around distance learning. And our schools, all of our schools are just doing a fantastic job of ramping up. Systems that they already had in place and even creating new and more innovative systems to meet the needs of their students. They specifically are going to talk about some things that they've put in place to help with Ds and Fs. And as you saw, the the slight dip in Ds and Fs is a good thing. But again, long term, we're expecting to have greater gains for our students. Next slide, please. So as Dr. Rodriguez mentioned, we are also very aware that we have certain groups of students, we have certain content areas. That we really need to focus on, and our schools have just done a fantastic job of implementing some safety nets. That are really targeting student populations to help increase student achievement and to get kids in school as well. And we'll be showcasing some of those. Next slide. Next slide, please. So some of the safety nets around instruction that you will be seeing that will be highlighted revolve around data analysis. You're going to really see a really deliberate effort from our our school sites. Very well done, very well planned data chats that teachers are having, and they're having them at the school level, the grade level. Down to the individual student, and you'll be able to see some examples of that. And with those with that data analysis, they're doing a great job of targeting students as well to meet their needs. They're being very creative about extended learning opportunities. And I'm really proud of the mindset shift that has occurred with our educators are really being flexible and helping our students to make upgrades. And giving them a little more time to do what they need to do. So you'll see some examples around that as well. Next slide. Other safety nets that they'll be showcasing, you're going to really be pleased to see what they've done around student incentives. To really get our kids engaged because we know that there is kids that we still have to reengage. And just really keeping them motivated to do their work and to get involved with school. You're going to see how they use, how they effectively use apps that have been purchased and tech tools. And some of the names you see here, Pardek, Nearpod, Jamboard. Kids love interacting with these tools, and so our school sites are doing a good job of using all those. And then you're also going to see that our students miss each other and they like to get together. So the schools are providing opportunities. For students to chat, to have celebrations together and many other activities that that they want to be involved in. Some of the additional support as well that you will see highlighted are how they're using their auxiliary personnel. They're really pulling out all the stops and using everybody on campus to really have have an all hands on deck approach to meet the needs of our students. The urgency has been put out there in our schools. All of our schools are doing a fantastic job at. At the call to action to do what we need to do. You'll see digital curriculum that they're using as well. There's been a lot of digital curriculum that's been purchased to support teachers. Students, parents, and you'll see evidence of that. You'll hear one student in particular talk about tutoring. And all the efforts that the school sites themselves are putting in around tutoring. And then also at the central office, we are also doing quite a bit with tutoring companies and providing extra support for our students. And one very interesting thing that I want to highlight is our schools have been very creative and and just wonderful about reaching out to our parents. They are involving parents and everything and even setting up incentives for the parents themselves to really help them to help their students. Next slide, please.
And we know that we need in order to to teach them, we have to reach them. I love that quote, right? And so we've really worked hard and we're not satisfied with the effort. We continue to strive to get better. At looking at how we can be more targeted in our approach. We've resumed home visits. We had to put a stop to them as the COVID rates were exorbitantly high. And we did not want to put employees at risk nor their families. And so we've resumed our home visits. We've also taken a very strategic approach around what schools are doing. What teachers are doing and then what the school district is actually doing to support sites. And and that's weaved into our district and site attendance plans. And just to give you an example of all hands on deck, we've utilized our records to do those phone calls home. To make sure that students are not there. So many schools within the first fifteen minutes of class starting. They're taking attendance and those students who are not there, they're actually getting a personal phone call. To help remind the family that school's in session and we need them there. And so that that personal connection is something that's vitally there, but we do know that we have some families that we're unable to reach. And so we're really excited that we're able to start back our in-person home visit. And as as Mrs. Applegate mentioned, you will see the the lengths that people are going to. At our school sites to really just, it's it's trying whatever and seeing that hopefully it works. And we have schools who have put in place badge programs. Where if they're coming to school every day, they get a badge that they can show on their Google Meet so that they can celebrate their great attendance. As well with families and really just trying to connect with them. And we know that the struggles are real for them. We know that families are doing their best. And so we work to to do our best and do better by connecting our families and helping them to connect. By doing more outreach, personal touches to actually engage our families. Next slide, please. And so before we get started, you know, as Mrs. Applegate mentioned. Our schools, we know that we're not where we need to be. But it is a it is a diligent effort. And we. And we have lots of great things happening at our schools. We have schools who are sharing their best practices with other principals and other school sites. Our priority is attendance and parent engagement. And we hope that our efforts are not in vain and we do have this collective impact of people working together, our teachers, our families, our unions, really working collaboratively and community members as well around how we can improve attendance and in increase family engagement.
Okay, Dr. Rodriguez, and I know once we go into the video, it's going to kind of go into more detail. So let me pause and hear from Mr. Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina.
Can we go back to the slide about the attendance? Where it had the one for African Americans up like by some extraordinary number?
I think it was page sixteen.
Yeah, so it's obvious that the number for absenteeism for African American is way up. I hate to ask this question because I kind of what the answer is going to be. You know, even when Ray Colbyson was there, the group of people that go out and and work to reduce chronic absenteeism, what are their jobs called?
So we have student recovery specialists and we also have attendance verifiers.
And how many of those are African American?
We have one specifically that is African American.
Out of how many?
Um, out of three.
And that's everybody is doing the, this working to reduce chronic absenteeism?
No, sir. Those are just the, the the student service, the student recovery specialists.
Because it you it's going to take more than one person to go out and reduce the numbers. And the problem we had in the past where we didn't have enough people that could work with the African American community. And my fear is if you don't, if you don't look to hire people that understand the culture, understanding community, this number is not going to go down. And 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 it's it's no different than sending out folks who are bilingual or EL community. There are certain cultural differences there and nuances that help to navigate that community. And if we're not looking at that, this number is going to get worse and worse. We can't, we can't gloss over this. This is a big deal. Thirty-eight percent? That's crazy. And I know if I look at certain sites, it's going to be even worse. And we do, we have to hire people who can identify with the folks of these communities to make sure these folks will be in service and find ways to get them back online and and uh and back in school. But you gotta tell me that they, I got somebody there that understands that the 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 cultural part is a big deal. When I used to promote parties, I I advertise on certain radio stations and put flyers out at churches and different places. If a person is not from that community, they don't even understand that. They don't know how to reach those people. So I, that's what my biggest fear is. And I know that's what the case is right now. And that's why the numbers are so bad. So maybe we can have like a subcommittee. I don't like doing subcommittee. But for something like this, we gotta do something. This is just way off.
So Mr. Tillman, we have engaged the ETSA department with Dr. Will Greer to assist us in strategizing around how we can connect our African American students. We have home visits being conducted at school sites by school site personnels. And we also have our Loma Linda Community Health Education Workers. We have four that have been contracted with the district and two of them are African American. Part of our our issue right now is that we have not been able to do home visits for almost a month because of the COVID rates. And so we're hoping that as we are able to go back to homes and engage people face to face, we should see a change in these numbers. But you are absolutely correct, Mr. Tillman. We do need to be able to have people out there that reflect the community and understand the needs of our distinct populations.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Tillman was asking, are any of these groups overlapping, like for instance Latinos or Hispanics that are also homeless or those that are in foster youth? Or all these non-duplicates within those areas? Just wondering.
No, they are not. They're not singletons. They are duplicates because you can't have, just like you mentioned, a student who is Latino and homeless and special education. So they can be identified double or triple.
Okay. All right. And then also with regards to even the homeless area, because I do agree, you know, the African American students. And and just to, there was many years ago that I went on these walks and it's all by, I guess, when you hire individuals or when we're working with individuals, it's even the way you knock on the doors. I remember having someone literally start banging, but they 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 were more in that that, I don't want to say officer field, but the way they handled and of course, that even startled me a little bit. So I guess just making sure that those that are working in these fields are not necessarily individuals within the peace officers group or or you know, those type of entities, but more community-based individuals that you know, have been working within various groups of 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 community and so forth. But just making sure that we keep that in mind as well.
Absolutely, Mrs. Rosales Medina. You know, we have people like Vicky Lee, like Talise, I now butcher her last name, so I won't even try, who have dedicated their lives to the service of homeless. And it's heartbreaking to see what they see. But as we're looking at these numbers, what what it shows is that, and we already knew this, our homeless youth have difficulties with school and having a place to learn. And so as we start looking at how we can better serve populations in the future, we do need to look at how we can best serve, you know, our homeless youth, our African American youth, all youth in general, but we we do have some cries for help here with our numbers. And so we do need to do some innovative things. And our our goal is that, you know, as we're able to go out more into the community and people see us, you know, our our attendance verifiers, our homeless liaisons, our our comforters out there, people know them, people listen to them, people, when they see them, they are, they they are beacons of hope in the community. People know them. But we just haven't been able to go out because of our COVID rates.
Right, right. And then with regards to the homeless, then you said that we are communicating with the families, even if it's by phone, making sure that they have the computer, they have access to wifi. Because like you said, it is really difficult to make sure to have that learning environment, even if it's at motel rooms. And making sure that we we are providing those those computers and the wifi or those devices that they need.
Absolutely. We just, and you know, we'll share maybe at our next board meeting. You know, we had our our homeless liaisons go out and provide power inverters that are solar that we did purchase for that very reason, because we knew that they wouldn't have access to electricity on a regular basis. And so, you know, we are, we are trying what we can do. But the needs that that certain populations have is 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 far reaching. But we continue to to try and we know that people are doing the best that they can. But but we are willing to try harder and do more because they're important. They're important to us.
Are you taking survey or are those that are answering the phone calls or those that are reaching out to the parents and students? Are they doing an intake just to find out why they're not going to class? Why aren't they online? I'm wondering if we're doing some type of survey intake as we're speaking to them casually, of course, and then just asking briefly, you know, what are some of the issues you're finding? And then maybe we have something where we can at least start noticing there's more health reasons, there's more other reasons that we're not really taking into effect.
Absolutely. And with our with our chronic absent students, we actually are very targeted with the support. And we know that many of those families require more case management. We are doing referrals as we see our parents and families, if there is a health concern. You know, we're able to access our partner in Hazel Health to do a a telephonic appointment with that family right then. We are able to take out computers to families as well as hotspots. We are asking, is there something that they need? We've delivered desks to homes. And we are asking those questions. We do know that there are some families that continue to to suffer through connectivity and that's something that is beyond even our control when we have cell towers going down or even electricity going down. And and we go through that and we're trying to make allowances for those families. But yes, we are asking those questions and we are doing everything that we possibly can considering, again, the situation with the limitations on the home visits. But you know, we're dropping them off. We we even had somebody who had some concerns with connectivity. And we sent somebody out there to sit on their porch to help them to make sure that they didn't get kicked off. Now, that's not happening every day, but it's for those most severe cases that we have to do more. And again, we're willing to do that. We are, we are doing everything that we can. Of course, we can do more. And we're, we are being very creative in our efforts.
All right. Thank you so much. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I I wanted to commend you, Dr. Rodriguez, that you are using our recades from our schools to help, you know, in terms of calling parents. Because the parents do know the recades, right? And you're repurposing, I guess, the responsibilities. So like you said, all hands on deck. So and and it speaks to what Mr. Tillman was saying, that we need to have, you know, people that that look like them, that know them and can relate to them and of course, that are trustworthy. And so I don't know to what extent you're all doing it, you know, at each site. But I do know that, you know, we do have African American recades and Latino aids that can relate to our parents and and so forth. And I also want to thank both of you for, you know, putting the the data, the raw data, the the total amount per demographic as well as the number, raw number for the percentage. Because that gives us an indication of just how many percentage. Percentage is usually hide things, but if you look at the African American, you know, students where, you know, it's very high, one thousand seven hundred sixty. Then you go to the Hispanic and it's eight thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. That's a lot of kids. Then if we look at English learners, it's three thousand, you know, twenty-seven. And what is SED? What what does that acronym stand for?
Students with disabilities.
Okay, that's even higher.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it is not.
Just your economically disadvantaged.
Oh, socially economically, okay, disadvantaged. So I mean, that's a lot of kids. Total number. So the total number, did you take an average? Is that why it's eleven thousand three three hundred and forty?
These are, this is how the numbers are coming up. Remember, this does not include our students at the continuation schools. That number is not included in the total.
That's not my question. Did you, is eleven thousand three hundred and forty the average of all the top numbers?
No, that should be a real number.
Eight sixty.
Because if you add up all the numbers, it comes out to more than eleven thousand three hundred and forty. Anyway, I think it's an average.
That, no, the eleven thousand, Dr. Flores, is the thirty-four percent of the district population. Is it, it's thirty-four percent of our district students?
Oh, of the district. Oh, yeah, I see. Okay, it's forty-seven. Okay, got it. I was just, I was adding all of them. Okay.
The reason if you add them all across, it wouldn't be eleven thousand is that, remember, there are students that are in multiple categories. So Hispanic students that are also socio socio-economically disadvantaged, that may be foster youth or homeless. So these are, they're non-distant numbers.
So they are in multiple categories, African American and Latino students are in multiple categories. Okay. All right. So, um, I think we need to think of out of the box. I don't have a solution. But I think at one time we were thinking of giving us incentives. I don't know if you remember Harold, a long time ago, how we could give incentives for attendance. And but I know times are bad and, you know, there's added, added issues with connectivity and so forth, but also added issues of, you know, of food and 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 places, you know, rents that are due and all of that. So anyway, I just thank you for your presentation and for the work that you're doing.
Ms. Sabios?
Yes. I'm I'm trying to see if I am interpreting this correctly. I'm looking side by side. I'm looking at the quarter one and semester one DF grades for middle schoolers.
Ms. Sabio, I can barely hear you.
Oh, no. Okay, hold on one second. Can you hear me better?
I can hear you. Do you need, is it a different slide that you're referring to?
No, no, no. I'll have this one up. I'm hearing side by side. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I I have it pulled up on my end because I'm comparing that to what you have up here. And I'm looking both at quarter one and semester one for Ds and Fs for both English and math. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at your your English learner here chronically absent. And that that means that it there's, it's gone up, correct? From last semester to, I'm sorry, from last year to this year.
Correct.
Okay. However, we're not, so we're not comparing. So in the other presentations for Ds and Fs that you showed, this is not comparing, it's comparing semester versus quarter. I I do see that your absence, hold on, let me. What I'm trying to say is that it doesn't look like there has been much improvement. Although it's, it's not so, I mean, it's a little over twenty percent for English learners of, you know, being chronically absent this year. How, and and I don't have the data. I wish the Ds and Fs of last year. I wish we were, you know, we could compare apples to apples. It doesn't feel like we are with this. But um, also for S SWD, that's students with disabilities?
No, it's the socioeconomically disadvantaged students.
No, she said the SW.
SWD is students with disabilities.
That's why, okay, never mind. That's what I thought it was to begin with. I'm confused.
That was, the other one is SED that Dr. Flores was asking. She's asking about the SWD. Got it.
It doesn't seem like there is in the Ds and Fs, there is much difference between math. So if you want to move, because now I'm looking at it on my end, but if you want to move back to language arts and math, it doesn't look like there's any difference with special education or, you know, students with disabilities in mathematics, there's like no growth or or no drop. Point five. So I'm between between last quarter and this semester. So I'm kind of, I guess what I'm asking is what what are we doing specifically with students in special education to reach out to them as well? I do see that there increase here in absenteeism also is, you know, pretty significant jump. I see some decrease and some, you know, on every other category for all the other students. But when it comes to special education students, I really don't see that much of a decrease in their Ds and Fs. And so, you know, I just want to point that out because that that's a concern, big one for me. So is there anything that we're, you know, particular particularly doing with with that population to help them, you know, decrease the Ds and Fs that they're having? You know, decrease the Ds and Fs that they're having? What what are we actively doing with that specific population?
Ms. Sabios, this is Dr. Monares. So um you will hear, we're gonna, you'll hear from two middle schools. Um and what they're doing for all students. And then um when we come back with the high school. We can ask our high schools to also share what they're doing specifically um for the students with special needs. We did not make that. Request of our schools this time for this middle school. So I'm trying to remember in the video. Don't believe there's something that's intentionally called out, but we can work with our high schools. Um you'll hear from some next time and ask them to share what they are doing for that, those, that that specific group of students.
Al- also, I'd like to add, uh Ms. Sabios, that as you know, our special ed students are graded according to their I E P goals. So their grades may not look as, um you're not going to see huge spikes there with Ds and Fs. Because they're, they're graded based on what their goals are on their I E P. So the grading is a little bit different with more flexibility with their, their grading.
So maybe there's um, maybe this is not a good uh compare, you know, a good way to um. Really analyze then that progress for them. So then maybe we need to have a different type of um, you know. Data set for them specifically.
Yes, you are correct. We can be more specific with with um our special education group. Um this, this data was to compare the progress report grades to the first um semester grades. So that's what we're doing, but of course, we can bring that information as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um we can go ahead and key up the presentation video.
And just really quickly before we go into that, um we do have our two school site leaders here with us.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt.
Did you, I just, I just wanted to say thank you because they've done a fantastic job and we're very proud of the work that they've done. But go ahead, queue it up. Thank you.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board, Cabinet and Community. It is my honor to be here this evening to share with you the intentional work. That our school community at Serrano is focusing on as we support our champion students during these challenging times. My name is Erin Freeman and I am the very proud principal of Serrano Middle School. On your screen, you can see the whys of what we do and Serrano's core beliefs. Our staff has worked hard over the past five years to adopt a data team cycle that allows students to be provided interventions and supports. That meet their specific needs. During our time and distance learning, this model has become even more important to monitoring our students. And helping them succeed no matter what. Tonight, we will share with you some examples of the five core principles of distance learning at work. Thank you.
My name is Tricia Kating and I'm the math teacher on the seventh grade Tigers team at Serrano Middle School. Today, we're going to be showing our PowerPoint on how we're trying to increase student achievement um this semester and we're really focusing on Ds and Fs. First thing we did was collect data for the team, so um grades by teacher. And then um individual teacher by student and by class. The first trend was non-participants, not showing up for class and not doing any asynchronous work. Um the first thing we did was home communication, seeing what we could do to help those students get to class and get started learning. Um we communicated with administration, the needs of the parents of the students that we could get in touch with. We had a supply drive for earbuds, composition books, pencils, hotspots, new iPads if needed. And then we asked the counselors to do home visits on students that were not, we were not able to get ahold of. The next trend was E L L section had the highest levels of Ds and Fs. So we thought what? What can we do for all E L L and all students to promote learning and growth mindset? We talked to administration to place Spanish-speaking avid tutors in as many of these sections as possible. We use tutor student teachers and co-teachers to help with breakout rooms, translate in chat, answer questions in chat. We created a tutoring section for Spanish speakers. We had the Spanish-speaking teacher on the team make the parent phone calls to the parents who spoke Spanish only. We use Remind um through the district for parent communication in Spanish and English weekly. And we send out Aries reports for missing assignments weekly. With a comment section using Remind to make English and Spanish notes to the parents. In Remind, you can write a message out and then translate it. So I would copy the English. And then I would translate it to Spanish, send out my Spanish message and then. Repaste my English mes- message and send it out. In Aries, um for my comments, sometimes I would just copy my Remind notes or sometimes I'd make new ones in Remind. And send out my comments in Spanish and English also. We have a parent communication log, a po- for positive and a supportive log. It includes emails, calls during class, texts and messages. The whole team contributes um by color group. We have targeted contests for grades and attendance. So we would have some kind of celebration after a certain amount of time if all students had just A, Bs and Cs. Or if everybody out for perfect attendance or for zero missing assignments, anything to make it interesting and fun. We use targeted tutorials for retesting, I Excel help, makeup work, Ds and Fs to raise the grade or Cs to get to Bs or As. We have Tiger Team Google Classroom where we push out celebrations for Student of the Week, birthday shout-outs, important information and contests. These are examples of our Student of the Week. We send out PDF awards via email and post to their Google Classroom. We focus on a growth mindset, constant promotion of the mindset that practice. Um increases fluency and that mistakes make your brain grow. And when we identify mistakes, we learn from them. We engage students with tech. We try to use as many applications as possible. We use virtual celebrations. Um and we try to come with unique ideas every, ideas every time. And we use S E L engaging assignments. We have S E L check-ins focused on positivity and engagement. We try to use in math engaging assignments like notice of wonders, number talks, think alouds, error analysis. And at the end of the week, we say what is working, what is not, how do we know, know, and what else can we do?
Alright, we're here with Nico. Nico, go ahead and introduce yourself to everybody.
So my name's Nicholas Perez. Um and s- and seven grade in purple Tigers.
What advice would you give another student that's struggling to help them improve their grades?
Uh join some tutoring classes because I joined Ms. Katie and Ms. Ramo and then that really helped a lot. Because I had F when I joined Ms. Katie and I left with a C. And I don't know what Ms. Ramo's, but hers helped my grades too.
Good morning, Sarah. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Sarah Olivas. I'm from Serrano Middle School.
Alright, Sarah, so this morning, we're going to talk a little bit about your grades, um how you made some improvements. And uh definitely going to talk about the progress you've made since first semester. So at the beginning of the semester, you pretty much had straight Fs, right? And by the end of the semester, you made some great progress. And so I want to know, what are some things you did that helped bring your grades up?
I started going to class more. I started doing more of my work and paying attention to keep my attention span on the things that we needed to do.
So what other specific uh things did you change in your life or or changes did you make to your daily routine that helped get your grades up?
I changed my sleeping schedule so that I could go to class earlier since I'd wake up earlier. So it'd be easier to pay attention with a better mindset that's fully rested.
Did it feel kind of impossible at first when you first saw your grades and saw how low they were? Did you feel like it was impossible that you'd never be able to get them up?
Definitely. I thought that I was way too far behind to catch up with everyone else.
And how do you feel about that now?
I'm feeling better knowing that I could get close to everyone else in such a short span of time.
So were you able to get help from teachers and go to like tutoring and stuff like that as well?
Yes, I was able to do that and I could say it helped a lot.
Alright, thank you very much, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board, Cabinet and esteemed community members. It's an honor to be with you this evening to share some of the things my wonderful staff at Curtis Middle School are doing to support students during distance learning. Especially around academics. For our tier one support, we look at data, but we're working more and more to ensure that when we are looking at data, it's disaggregated. So we're clear about how our different student groups are doing. We also utilize our advisory period where we focus on S E L but also academic success. We want kids to understand things like what their GPA is and why it's important, how to set goals. How to turn in your assignment so that you get credit for them in Google Classroom. We also have a school-wide incentive system called Scholar. And with Scholar, students are able to attain different levels by getting credits. And they get credits based on different areas such as how well they do academically, with behavior, attendance. And extracurricular activities. We also do a Student of the Month that teams are able to nominate students for. We also have our teams who, they do so much work to make sure that students are supported. So I'm going to turn it over to one of my teams right now to share a little bit with you about what they do.
Hi, we're the Jaguar team at Curtis Middle School. My name is Mrs. Nelson. I'm the reading and language arts teacher for our seventh grade team.
Hello, my name is Ms. Lopez Ossino. I am a product of the Southern New York District and I'm the world history teacher.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Hughes and I'm the seventh grade Jaguar science teacher.
Hi, I'm Richard Dehada and I'm the Jaguar math teacher.
And these are the team interventions for both students and parents as well as incentives. Based on the specific needs of our students and parents um for academics, attendance and S E L needs. Um as far as what you are looking at right now, these are the following responses to intervention. After we view D N F reports as well as discussions within team meetings. As for needs uh in order to help improve the success of Curtis Middle School students and parents. Uh first, as a team, we decided to grade on a four-point rating scale. Um with Doug Reeves providing the actual scaling percentage guide. We also allowed until the end of the semester, and we'll do this as well for second semester, to turn in any missing work without penalties.
The next steps we followed were target team intervention for attendance, academic. S E L needs through discussion of D N F reports with students and parents. We also did Aries check every Monday as well as work checklist to help students complete missing assignments.
Uh we also take some days out of our schedule to go through uh tech troubleshooting. Um so that students are better able to access all of the information in distance learning. Um and then we also have makeup workdays scheduled into our um lesson plans as well.
We provide consistent, real-time feedback from teachers for our students. And we also provide positive personalized letters home encouraging attendance.
Okay, we also have some Jaguar team interventions for parents because we want to make sure that we are addressing all the needs of our stakeholders. Um the very first thing we provide is a Jaguar parent survey available to be filled out and addressed daily. Um they can choose to address the entire team or they can send a um inquiry to a specific teacher. And this also helps mitigate the issues that they might have with um like creating email accounts. We have a Jaguar website with video tutorials on using technology, information and events calendar and work due calendar. And we also um send Aries reports, their email, mail and sometimes delivered in person. With instructions for missing work and how to help their students succeed.
In addition, we were able to make phone calls for updates on grades or celebrations. We also were able to provide team meetings for any extra help they might need. And we were available to do tutoring during office hours on a daily basis.
We also have more in our incentives for our students and and parents. So for our students, some of our incentives include. Picking a student of the week and celebrating them for growth, for work and and everything that they've been doing in our classes so far. We also give monthly scholar awards as part of our school-wide program, but we pick students um from our team to to celebrate. Um on a monthly basis with um scholar points. And we also have Fun Friday get-togethers at the end of the month just to encourage students to participate, to come and join us. And just to keep the social atmosphere of school as much as we can.
Some of our other incentives for students are a weekly get-together on Thursday, so a fun Thursday for our students to come and. Just kind of hang out. Alright, we do positive phone calls, emails, letters. And home visits for improvement in grades or behavior. And incentive for parents is that we do a parent raffle every two weeks uh for parents that. Check their students' Aries, so they check their grades as well as their attendance.
The other additional support that is unique to the Jaguar team. Um we've conducted two to three home visit check-ins a week to provide hard copies of work, attendance information, stress relief, so stress balls, fidget. Uh coloring as well as LGBTQ plus support.
We were able to create a social emotional learning environment through embedding self-care breaks in class. Allowing late work to be turned in and chatting with students every two months. Along with sharing the data with the team, the counselors and administrators.
Uh we've also embedded makeup days into our lessons, provided class time to complete assignments, uh reviewed assignments in class. Offer one-on-one support during office hours, um including making appointments for one-on-one help for students. We provide extra credit opportunities, multiple chances to complete assignments. And create missing work checklists for students to keep track of what they need to do to to keep up with distance learning.
I've also worked with students during office hours and after hours. Uh as well as even during winter break to do some makeup assignments to bring those grades back up. If they're willing to come in and do the work, I'm not going to turn them away. Uh and I regularly post assignments with links in the chat for students arriving late. That way, regardless of what time they show up into the class, they know exactly what we're working on and they're more likely to complete the assignment.
So thank you very much for listening, um for listening to our interventions for support. And should you ever have any questions or comments or wish to see some of our ancillary materials. All you need to do is contact Dr. Greer at Curtis Middle School. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you Jaguars. And finally, for tier three, our most intensive level of support. We've been utilizing our program facilitators and our resident subs to provide additional support beyond what our teachers are doing every day in class. Mainly, we're targeting our African American Promise Scholars and our English Learner Promise Scholars. And the time that we've built into our schedule, three days a week to provide additional support. We wanted our first contact home with the parents to be positive. And so initially, our phone calls, emails and visits were around positive communication. And doing a needs assessment. We wanted to make sure we knew what parents needed and felt might help their students. After that, in building a relationship, we contacted parents again and set up meetings using Google Meets. And the first was initial meeting just to check in and let the parents and the students know what was going on. And then there were optional check-in meetings available afterwards for parents and students. What we found from that was that we had a lot of parents and students that really liked the increased contact. And so what we're doing for second semester is we're calling their re-engagement sessions. And so in the first meeting with parent and student, we talk about the purpose of the meetings. So why they're, why they are there. We scheduled the Google Meet with both the parent and the student. During that time, we give parents an opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns. We talk about attendance. We talk about grades. We go over grades last year, the tutoring support that's available after school with our resident subs. Uh we do goal setting and then progress monitoring in the form of continued check-in meetings along with looking at their other data. And we think this is going to be a wonderful support for our students. So we're really excited about this. In fact, this Thursday, we're hosting a celebration for our African American Promise Scholars. Who made improvements in grades, attendance, and who've also have really good GPAs. And so we're excited to be able to share that with our students and our families this week. Thank you very much for your time.
And those are our fabulous educators having a great time. I'm sorry that the video lapsed a little bit, but I just wanted to take my hat off to both staffs and their leaders. It's just a fantastic example of all the hard work that they've embarked on. Obviously, this doesn't happen overnight, but they were well poised to implement some of the strategies and and systems that we have in our in our core principles for distance learning. It was an easy pivot for them because they obviously had many, many things already in place. And you would see examples of this board from from many, many of our schools in the district. I just am very proud. They're doing a fantastic job pulling out all the stops and doing what they need to do for for our students and their families. And then I also, Mr. Tillman, just to to let you know that I am working with Dr. Greer. We are enlisting our community partners. We have many partners with Cope, Blue, ICUC, many that Dr. Greer is working with them to repurpose some of what they're doing. They're still doing quite a bit of the tutoring, but we're also enlisting them and helping us with family outreach. So we are working with our partners that are well-known in the community to also help recuperate and re-engage some of our students as well.
You started doing that?
We just started probably two months ago. We started reaching out to them and asking them to help us with family re-engagement.
Thank you.
So next slide.
Madam President, do we get to ask or make comments or do we have to wait? Oops.
You're muted.
I'm sorry. I was saying they had a next step slide and then after that I was gonna go to chat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Board, you've seen that there are so many concerted efforts and very targeted efforts around our our steps in distance learning that we've taken to this point. But we know that we still have a ways to go and we are completely committed to doing whatever we need to do. We are going to start exploring some more innovative and creative ways of reaching our students. So we are going to be developing the Accelerated Student Achievement Plan, or ASAP, as it's better known, because we want to really send that message that there is an urgency around what we need to do with our students. That plan is going to be inter-divisional, involving all of our stakeholders. And we're going to address areas such as attendance. We we mentioned some of the things that are being done, but we know that there are many others that can be done as well. So we'll be looking for innovative ways to help with re-engaging our students. There will be strategies around teaching and learning, student engagement, progress monitoring and assessment. And we know that right now we don't have the assessments that we had from the state. So we are pivoting and doing some other things to monitor the progress of our students. But as you saw from both sites, they're very, they're really keeping their finger on the pulse of how their students are doing. We're going to be exploring extended learning opportunities with a huge push on summer school, possibly Saturday, whatever it takes. We're going to be bringing you information at our high school presentation at the next board meeting around AB legislation, AB 104, and other legislation, AB 2121, all those different legislation packets that that target specific students and how we can be flexible with graduation requirements and whatever else we need to do in order to help our students graduate. We will also be attending to family engagement and really reaching out to our families in very creative ways, as you saw, even with the incentives for our parents as well. And then again, working with our stakeholders and our partners and how, enlisting them to help us with this work because it really is all of us put together and we have some fantastic partners that we know that can really help us out. So this plan we are embarking now on, working on that through the three different divisions that we'll be working on our on our ASAP plan. And I believe that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, I have Ms. Rosales Medina followed by Dr. Flores.
I just wanted to say I love that presentation from Curtis Middle School. There's a lot of points that they mentioned that just makes sense on how we can help our students succeed, going from those Ds and Fs and to excelling in the classroom. They did mention the 4.0 grading system. Is there a way for you to kind of express the difference between the 4.0 versus the percentage points? Because I know that that's one of my complaint when we were looking at the grading policy is that the percentage points, when it goes from zero to 100%, have the disparities even between F, that's from 0 to 59% is large. And I think what, you know, anyways, maybe I'm already explaining, but but for those, you know, it's just, it's a tad, I think the 4.0 is it's a lot better in trying to reduce those Ds and Fs. But if someone can explain it better that way, those that are in the audience or even those board members that this is new for them, what this, what this really means.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And that stems from the work that Serrano Middle School has done, a lot of work with Doug Reeves, around changing our grading system, basically. And so now we're taking it to scale with more of the district's sites. Teachers are coming voluntarily and they're learning more about more flexibility in grading. We do have Ms. Freeman here, who is the principal of Serrano Middle School, who has implemented the grading scale. So Ms. Freeman, please feel free to answer.
Good evening, Madam President, Rogers, VP Wyatt, Board, Cabinet, and Community Members. So the 4.0 scale is about standards, is about mastery of the standards versus kind of our older concept of the As and Bs. And some of the things that go along with the 4.0 scale is the the ability for students to continue to retake assessments. So it goes back to that data cycle. We want students to master the content. And so thus, we look at our data. What have they mastered? What have they not mastered? What do we need to reteach? What do we need to not reteach because they already have it? I think actually in this distance learning format, that's probably one of the most significant aspects is that we become very fine-tuned about what assessments we're giving, how often we give them, and only reteaching what needs to be re-taught. And so that's what the 4.0 scale allows us to do. And it allows students to take that stigma away of what you were talking about, Ms. Medina, in regards to the 100-point scale and go back to the point of mastery. Do you have the information, the input, or the emphasis is put on the the standards and whether or not, and what you have mastered? And then students are allowed to own their student, own their learning by measuring their own learning against rubrics and other different devices in order to show progress and know what they are and aren't learning.
Right, no, thank you. Yes, no, and is that transferable to the ARI's portal? I know that's something that, is that easily implemented in ARI's portal? Is that something we have to look at? Another point is, can we look at how we're doing this across the board for all middle schools as well?
Yes, ma'am. So that has been one of the points Dr. Reeves will tell you all the time. You make the systems work for you. You don't make your your teaching work into the system. And so one of the things that Serrano teachers did was come up with a four-point scale. And it's a, it's kind of a beautiful document. It actually equates all of the different mastery of the standards that goes from the Foi Pono and how you input those points into ARI's in order for to make that smooth transition. As well as the document that we use also explains how it does equate to the ABs and C systems because we still do need to be able to communicate that effectively to our parents.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that presentation piece. I mean, it's something that we've been, many of us, board members have been really trying to address in in order to reduce the Ds and Fs, is really truly looking at the grading system and how we can make it improve and to support our students here. So thank you so much for setting that example. I'm hoping we could set this across the board at other school sites.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
And Dr. Flores? I want to profusely thank you both, Ms. Freeman and Dr. Greer, for your leadership and support of your teaching staff and our students and our parents. You know, I retired as a teacher educator. And what I saw and observed just in the few minutes that you presented was outstanding leadership, true caring, commitment, dedication, professionalism among a collaborative teamwork with a focus always on the students and also the parents through authentic caring and communication. And I had put on here, created structures and routines and processes, processes of teaching, learning, and assessment. And you called it a system. It's more than a system. I know you call it a system, but it is truly, truly, you know, a way of teaching and learning and keeping the focus on our kids and communicating with our parents. And actually, you guys communicate with each other. So it's, it's very commendable. And I just loved your explanation right now about how you all got together and transformed the the grading system and made it work for you. And like Ms. Medina said, you know, it's truly, how do I say, it makes my heart so warm to see the teachers also having fun. It was incredible that kids get to see their teachers, you know, being weird, which is good, but having fun. And it shows that, you know, you're human and and the Jaguar team, and you guys rock. I'm sure there's lots of them, other teams. And then your Tier Three with the AAPS and ELPS, that is so innovative. I just commend you for that. And I think Ms. Applegate, they are truly, you know, examples. You say there's many other schools that are doing this, but wouldn't it be something if we could get all our schools, not the same thing, but their own manifestation, their own creation that works for them? I think that would be truly an incredible feat for us. And I just commend you all. I, you made my heart so warm and it's so beautiful to see how committed you all are. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I, you know, I, I, I knew, Dr. White and I felt that when you all saw this presentation and we had to get through actually the unfortunate, ugly side of things that we know we didn't have control over. COVID has come in and and just done damage in a lot of ways, but our district have prevailed. And just to see that brings back that hopefulness we talked about. And before I go on, Dr. Hill, I know you wanted to reserve your comments for public comments, but one of the reasons why I will call upon you, if you don't mind, because I know that Ms. Freeman and Dr. Greer, yes, Dr. Greer has endured with us tonight and they're both on and they're probably going to go off, so you might want to comment to them. We just, we thank you guys because you guys are leading this and you're here tonight to show an example. And I know in my screen, I was looking over to see the singing Dr. Greer. She's on, she is on the line. So, Dr. Hill, did you want to comment now?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say to the administrators and the teachers, you are just absolutely awesome. The job's not easy, but you're hanging in there. You're making it fun. You may not have all the students there, but look at the difference you're making to the ones who are there. And that can be so encouraging. Others, you know, others would show up. I, I, again, I commend you for what you're doing. It's not easy. You know, I've been out there with you and I know it's not easy. But the one thing that I heard in one of the songs that I hope you use often is, "I'll be there for you." And I think the more students hear that instead of, "Why weren't you at school?", is "I'll be there for you." And that's going to make a big difference with many of these kids. Because you, you know, when I did an accreditation, it was the students who would say, "We don't go to school to learn English and math. We go to school for our teachers." And we know they're proud of us when we do learn English and math. So that they do not have that connection right now. And but just hang in there and just continue to let them know that you'll be there for them. So thank you, Ms. Freeman, and thank you, Dr. Greer. Keep up the good work. You're not the only two. You're not the only two. I know there are a lot of administrators out there and teachers who are doing an excellent job. So to all of our people who are keepers of our students, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Can I add to that, Dr. Hill?
Who's, oh, is that Dr. Greer? Yes. I hear a voice, but I don't see a picture. There you are. Yes.
I just want to shout out, we had our our parent, our African-American Promise Scholar event last Thursday. And we had a parent who spoke up and just really was thankful to be there, but she was also thankful to our district. She said SBCUSD has really done a great job supporting our kids and families. And I shared that with Ms. Applegate and Dr. Volkmer last week. And so I, I know you guys know, it doesn't have to be said, but we have staff that are doing a tremendous amount of work. We know our numbers. We know our data. We look at it all the time. And we're constantly problem-solving around how to better and improve outcomes for students. But one thing that I keep reminding my staff of, because I know how hard they are on themselves as well, my priority is that we all come out of this alive and save them as they're doing this work as well, to make sure I'm there to support them and that they engage in self-care, because I need them to be there for students and not just our certificated staff. Our classified staff has done a phenomenal job as well of supporting. They're, you know, calling up parents and they're just creating ARI's. Times and other things. And so I have a fabulous staff and they are constantly coming up with ideas and ways to support. Make it easy for me to say yes, and they constantly do that. And so I'm just grateful to be the principal at Curtis Middle School and to be able to serve. And I'm also grateful to just be part of a wonderful cohort of administrators. We frequently talk and trade ideas and
you again. We can support you all to be I know we will, and you guys just showed us a glimpse of that and we are kudos. kudos. And we look forward to more more of this wonderful work. Thank you. And we know you have to log on early in the morning, so you're probably going to log I'm going to move to nine point zero reports and comments, nine point one beginning with the board members. And if board members you are going to make comments, please put it in the chat so I know if you desire to make comments. Okay, we will begin with whoa, it went, it's moving fast. Okay, I think the okay, let me let it stop because it's moving. It's moving so quickly. Okay, so Dr. Wyatt, looks like you are first up there.
All right, I'm rarely first, so you know I must have a lot to say. Well, first of all, just outstanding presentation and and thank you to everyone that put that together and President and work for for our kids and and our community and making sure that we're getting kids to school. So and they're getting their work done as well. So great job. Couple of things to celebrate, as we already know, and we've said many times, I'm sure all of us will say it as well as Dr. Volkmer, but just fantastic job to our Cajon mock trial team, made our city proud, our community proud, made all of us proud, outstanding. Number of us were there and got to watch the semifinals and the finals and just, you know, I want to applaud all the schools and all the students that were there. To do that, that contest, it's unbelievable. They're like lawyers in action already. So just so proud of them. A great job to Youth Services and Dr. Bikenova and the Berdue Film. I'm sure many of you watched that as well and just a great story and testimony to our kids and their resiliency and and what they do. I think it was last night at CSBA, we we get to celebrate again our wellness program and them getting the Golden Bell. So a great job again there. And I know we've said that a few times, but wow. I know that's a huge priority to a number of us here on the board and we just want to see that. But that is those. I'm trying to think if I missed anything. I probably did. And but maybe I'll circle. Anyway. What it was. Cabinet and Dr. Volkmer. And you know, I don't know right now is the time, maybe we'll cover it at the next meeting, but if we'll be able to come back to practice in sports, I know that's been a concern from some of the parents out there as well as our students. Tuney, if it's other schools that are out there in our same league and our same area that are getting
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Um, yes, this week I actually had a meeting with sparked a conversation was regarding mental health. And some of the issues that our students are really struggling with, and this is across the board from different walks of life that are actually struggling with mental health issues. And a lot of emotional needs that they need, especially now with Covid. So I just came recently came across an art
You're muted. We can't hear you.
Ms. Rosales Medina, can you you hit the mute button?
Okay, there you go. So and the CDC report compared to the 2019, and I shared the link so you could see it there. A mental health related visits for children ages, and this is the emergency increased approximately twenty four percent. And this is from January first through October. It actually shows that during the pandemic, it actually the emergency room visits and the more we were in it, the amount of students who were having a lot of mental health issues as well as twelve to seventeen year olds increased by thirty one percent. And so the reason why I'm mentioning this is that I know it's really hard to go in our campuses, but I'm wondering if we can do something virtually. And even if it's just to talk about their day, or if they're, you know, there's just something small, but to them it's big. Contracts with a few organizations that help out with mental health. And I'm wondering if we can try to connect with them and really looking at across the board throughout the whole district for students that they're able to attend maybe these thirty minute sessions. Just to get that extra morale support because a lot of to increase a student achievement, increase the amount of students attending classes as well as has shown that there has been a large increase with an emergency visits to regarding mental health issues. And so basically, that's my my concern and what I want to share.
Thank you. And next up is Mr. Tillman.
I know we have concerns, but I do appreciate the transparency. You know, we can't deal with the problems. We don't know the problem exists. And so for me, had a problem, right? So I do thank you all for that and I appreciate everybody to solve some of these problems. Congratulations to Cajon High School on the mock trial. It is a big deal. I was here for many, many years. We never placed at all. So we made the investment, right, Dr. Volkmer? And it's paying off. So thank you to all the folks that teachers and parents and students who helped. I think it'd be good for us just to clear the air and talk about Dr. Volkmer at some point where we're at exactly with CIF. I know I got an email from a parent today. I'm talking about cross country events. And and I mean, cross country running may be something that we agree is is a next meeting. And then, you know, not losing sight of I looked at the county's website and just today they posted sixty one deaths from Covid nineteen. So, you know, I continue to tell everyone that the virus is real. And we and that's what's driving everything that we do, right? The biggest problem we have right now is is supply of the vaccine. I was in an all staff meeting with the Public Health Director and asked when, at what point would our staff be able to get the vaccine? And he said, you know, he didn't know because there's a, there's actually a supply shortage right now. So and then I asked about teachers and you know, some of the thought is that you won't get past the sixty five or older for a few months, which which in California, the teachers are the next group, I believe. We're not in, they're not vaccinating teachers right now, right, Dr. Volkmer?
Not not yet in San Bernardino County.
Right. And then I actually just had a conversation with Talahana Superintendent, Talahana for County Superintendent Schools. And he was saying the number of vaccines they've been get that they have been the proposed amount they're going to get is not even half of what they would need for the first vaccine for all the educators in the county. So we're a long way off. And I, you know, I listen to as much information as possible about the variants. But to say on the one hand that to give vaccine, a vaccine and get vaccinated is important for your safety. On the other hand, say, teachers should come back and work without the vaccine. I don't know if people, you know, reconcile that. We're real close right now. And I think we've said it before that hopefully our district will prepare to open up in near normal status in the upcoming school year because of vax, the the vaccines will be available. That's what my hope is. There's no guarantee, but maybe we can talk about that too in terms of what the planning is. And and if everyone was vaccinated, because they were talking about now proposing a vaccination for children throughout the summer. So if it was possible for everybody to be vaccinated, is the plan to come back with full capacity? Is there any, has that any discussion been made on that, Dr. Volkmer?
We're we're having deep discussions on that very issue, Mr. Tillman. We can bring back a report to you probably in the beginning of March in terms of some proposals and what we're thinking in terms of the summer and the beginning of next year.
I think that'd be beneficial to everybody. And, you know, when I got a call from a person today and say, you know, what do you, what are you going to do about football? You ought to just, you ought to just tell us what you're going to do. It's day to day. I I don't, we don't, no one around us is playing football, not because we're mean and don't like sports, don't realize the role that positive role that sports play in our students' lives. We're weighing circumstances and we're not in control of that. I I like I told the person on the phone, there's no one playing football around us because the whole state has been deemed as decided that we're not at a point where we think we can do it. And, you know, I I I thought we're out the woods and then somebody said we're going to have a it's good. The analogy was a hurricane, a five rated hurricane in Covid increase because of the new variant, the new variants, and we're not getting vaccinated fast enough. So I don't say that to be make everybody feel sad. It's just the reality that we're dealing with and it's complex and no one has all the answers. So I just appreciate us all working together, still trying to give students the best education possible. And 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 for all the staff that are going over and above to make it happen. And and not losing sight of the sickness and death that is all around us. I think the worst thing we do in all this is talk about statistics. And somebody somebody will say only point or or one percent, but when you multiply that by fifty thousand people, then you're talking about fifty people there. So, you know, the number sounds small, but when you talk about it in terms of real people, then it's not a small thing. It's a big deal. So just with that, I just hope we keep looking out for each other, keep being safe and keep doing the best that we can. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bios?
Yeah, so I'll make this brief. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that presented today and everybody that stuck, you know, with us through this meeting. I know it's been quite long. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the cabinet members. I have not had a chance to do that. You know, I'm fairly new and adapting and learning and everything's, you know, so much information to to just grasp and get a hold of. And I'm doing the best that I can. But I I need to say, you know, thank you to, you know, Ms. Chris Tacos and Ms. Antiveros, Ms. Refunches, Ms. Menares, you know, Dr. Menares, Ms. Rodriguez, Dr. Rodriguez, and you know, so forth. Every single one of you, Dr. Volkmer, thank you so much, you know, for Karen. Thank you. Yeah, everybody, because you guys have made this very smooth for me. And, you know, I know I bombard every one of you with questions, but it's because I'm trying to catch on and learn. So thank you so much for your patience and thank you, everybody out there.
You're on mute. President Rogers.
I'm sorry, I said, Dr. Hill, and I was like, why isn't she moving? I was waiting to hear from you, Madam President. I I I want to start out by saying to Cabinet, thank you. Great presentation on the academic achievement this evening. No, it's not where we want it to be, but we know you're working on it and that's and that's what we we ask for you to do. And it, you you're certainly doing your best and we appreciate that. I did attend the San Bernardino County budget meeting through San Bernardino County Schools. That was really interesting. I also attended the Inland Empire African American Parent Engagement workshop that was sponsored by Cal State San Bernardino. I then, the next day, I was at the San Bernardino County Wellness Summit. And that was just absolutely awesome with some great, great speakers. And I know Dr. Wyatt mentioned, but last night it was the County School Board annual meeting. And as always, County School, a great job. But I just want to leave you with one little story here that hopefully will will give you an idea of what's happening with our kids. And, you know, they 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 don't, they don't all fall out to death at the same time. And I might have shared this story with you. If I did, I apologize. About six, seven months ago, maybe a year, because it was an in person visit. This lady came up to me and said, I'm sure you don't remember me, but you had my son at San Andreas. And I asked her his name and she gave me and I said, oh, my gosh. He was a rough one. He 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 made me earn every dime I had. And she laughed. She said, yes, I know he did. She said, he was, he was, he was a rough in a toughie. And I said, well, how is he doing now? She says, he's doing quite well. So then I asked, what is he doing? And she said, oh, he's he's a physician over at Kaizen Fontana. So I just want I know people get sometimes frustrated when everything's not in place. But this is the new normal. There is no old normal. And even during the old normal, it wasn't the greatest normal that was around. But I think one of the things we need to share with our parents, to share with our students, our staff members and everybody else, even our community partners. We got to be patient. And we got to know that it's going to get better because I I I I know it will and you know it will. But the most important thing, we need to let our kids know that we need them, we want them. They can be successful. It's it's okay that they haven't been in school its number of of days. But if you can get them in school tomorrow, it'd be worth every effort that you've put forth. So I just want to say again to everybody, you're doing an amazing job. I'm talk, I'm speaking with administrators, teachers and different ones all the time. And I'm just hearing some really good things. There are so many good things out there. I'm not hearing any principal complain because it it's been talking about the good things. And that's what we should, that's what we should do. In twenty twenty one, let's continue to focus on the good. Let's continue focusing on what our kids, where they are now, and let's take them from there. And even though you haven't seen them all year, smile. And no, we don't want anyone knocking on doors because we don't want anyone contacting virus. But we certainly want to get our kids back. And and the day we get them back is the day that we can say I've accomplished something else. And we just need to understand they're very capable, but until we walk in their shoes, they're out there for many reasons. And I think it's, you know, so sad when I heard a couple of days ago about the young man from senior from Pacific High School who was killed. You know, and the first thing I why wasn't he in school? But the other thing I said, I'm not walking his his shoes. There might be a reason he was where he was. So I just because they all need help. We don't know where where they are, but we need to get them to the next. So thank you and thanks to the staff.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Dr. Flores?
I couldn't unmute me. It just sent me. Thank you, Dr. Hill, for those very profound, very profound wisdom and for us not to lose sight on on kids, our kids, and to thank our teachers and our administrators and our classified. I remember when I started teaching high school. I remember I said to the principal, just give me the kids that nobody else wants to teach because I will, I will teach them. And so that's who I taught. And I saw a hundred eighty seven kids a day. And and I wanted to be a teacher. I, when I, I knew when I was six years old and that I was placed on this earth to be a teacher and to be here for kids. And so and then I became a teacher of teachers. So. And so, um, and then I became a teacher of teachers. So I'm here for teachers too and for all of us. And I would like to start out today, uh, not to celebrate my mother's 98th birthday. My mother, uh, turned 98 today and, uh, she has incredible genes, uh, incredible woman, uh, uh, credible survivor. Um, and, uh, her name is Carmen, uh, Carmen Lopez Flores. And so, uh, feliz, uh, cumpleaños mama. And, um, anyway, and I'd also like to honor, uh, Black History Month. Um, I believe that, um, it should be Black History every day, uh, uh, Latino history every day, everybody's history every day. Uh, but I do believe that our focus, so that we do highlight Black History. And I am a, a student. I am a reader. I'm a prolific reader. And my husband started reading this book and finished it. Oh, it's r- r- reversed. I don't know how we can, it's called Cass by, uh, Isabel Wilkerson. I highly recommend that, um, you buy this and read it. It is a profound book. I barely just started, um, on chapter two. And I can't get past chapter two because I keep reading these two pages over and over. That's how great of a thinker and writer Isabel Wilkerson is. And then, um, we just got this book today, um, Abram, Dr. Abram Kendi and Keisha Blaine, Dr. Abram Kendi and Dr. Keisha Blaine, just edited this book called 400 Souls. Ninety, uh, ninety African-American scholars, uh, poets, writers, um, have written, uh, a, a community history of African, African-Americans from 1619 to 2019. It's called 400 Souls. So, um, that, that's our work. Uh, and we also have to learn, I believe, uh, as, as adults. And I too want to congratulate Cajon's mock trial team for winning the championship. Dr. Volkmer, I don't know if, um, you can send them a letter from us or from the board? Do that? Is that possible?
Certainly.
Okay, okay, great. Um, I only have two more statements. Uh, I was really inspired by, uh, the presentation by both of our middle schools, uh, gives me a lot of hope. Uh, and our kids and parents hope. And it just reminds me that we need to expand our outreach to our parents through our site liaisons and administer, administrators, just like they're doing. Um, parents are so important in terms of supporting our kids' welfare, our wellbeing and their achievement, as noted and as evidenced by what they, uh, presented. And, um, I just like to publicly, I already said it in closed session, but I'd like to publicly ask again that, Dr. Volkmer, we post our, our superintendent search schedule online so that our, our community and parents and our staff know what we're doing. So, thank you very much. And it's so nice to see everybody. And, um, thank you Cabinet for all that you do, uh, for your leadership, for your hard work. Uh, and I truly appreciate you. And also my board members, I really appreciate you. And, uh, of course I love everybody. So, good night.
Not yet.
Oh yeah, not yet, but you know.
Maybe 11 o'clock or maybe 11 o'clock. But, um, uh, again, good evening, everyone. And this is a time when we definitely have an opportunity just to, again, thank everyone for what they're doing. And certainly you guys know, every chance I get, I'm either going to text you or call you, you know, because you guys are working all the time. And I appreciate everything that this district is doing. And that is why, um, you know, we're still out there. We're still making virtual rounds. I guess that's what you'll call them. Dr. Hill mentioned some and Dr. Wyatt and Kudo, same thing. Uh, we were doubling up on some of those meetings. And one that they didn't get to was the, the dads club over at Wilson. I wa- was able to pop in on that one. And that was good, very, you know, our dads are very important um, to the success of our students as well. And sometimes they don't get, you know, they don't get the koodles that they should. So we appreciate our dads and we're thankful that Wilson is over there doing that work. But to everything else, you know, we are pressing forward. And as I said, we're going to get through it. We're going to be better when we come out on the other side. We are really doing things that others have not, not that they don't want to do it, they just have not been able to get there yet. But because of, uh, the team and working together on behalf of our students, we've been able to press forward so we can see that there's light on the other side of the tunnel. So again, thank you for all of that hard work. I do want to say, um, happy, um, Black History Month. And I agree that, you know, sometimes I'm challenged with just saying one thing like it's not, shouldn't be forever. I'm like that with Thanksgiving and all these other things, you know, we, we celebrate those days, but these are things, principles that we should constantly be doing. And therefore the world will be a better place. So we are now going to move forward in our agenda with our superintendent and staff comments nine point two.
Thank you, thank you, President Rogers. Just a few updates, uh, board. Um, just wanted to let you know that we had a, uh, the first in a series of LCAP meetings, community meetings last week. Uh, and, um, we, we basically spent time kind of coming, uh, bringing them back up to speed, te- taking, uh, transitioning them back to the regular LCAP cycle from the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan Cycle that we were temporarily on, uh, during COVID. Uh, and so we're off to a good start. We'll have a meeting, we want the public to know that we're going to have a meeting every month, uh, up until June, when you approve our LCAP plan. And we really, really want their voices and their fingerprints all over our plan because that's really what it's supposed to be about. Uh, and so we actually met with, uh, a couple of different groups, our union leaders and our, uh, Community Advisory Council that looks over our special education programs and asked them for, uh, more ideas on how to better engage our parents and get them to those meetings. So we're looking forward to great success there. As you heard, uh, a little bit earlier, uh, we are going to have a town hall meeting on February 9th, all centered around vaccination and just making sure that our community has the opportunity to come and get good information. Then it's a personal decision whether they want to get vaccinated or not, but we want to make sure we get the, uh, information into their hands. So that'll be February 9th, next Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Uh, and then, um, uh, excited to let you know that we're having a virtual career fair in the area of manufacturing tomorrow for students that are interested in careers in manufacturing. You know, typically in a co- in a virtual environment, you wouldn't think you could have a career fair, but our team has put together a really great event, uh, tomorrow, uh, for a virtual cu- career fair in manufacturing. Uh, we just want to give some shout outs. Uh, first of all, parent Mia Cooper. I think many of you know, if not all of you know Mia. Um, Mia is on, by the way, I think almost every advisory council we have, I know she's on our district advisory council. She's an officer, by the way, on all of them, on our district advisory council, on our district African-American advisory council, and I believe on our community advisory council for special education as well. Well, we, we appre- so appreciate her. And apparently the word got out, uh, she has been elected as a member of the California Practitioners Advisory Group. Uh, CPAG is the State Board of Education's California, uh, provides input regarding local, state and federal accountability and also serves as a Title I Committee of Practitioners. So let's give Mia Cooper a big shout out for representing the district so well as a, just an outstanding parent. Um, you all, you heard again that our, our Golden Bell, uh, Award for Student Wellness and Support Services Programs uh, was again highlighted at the, uh, San Bernardino Califor- or San Bernardino County School Boards Association last night. Great, a great event. Happy to, uh, celebrate that one more time with our team. Uh, then we want to give a shout out to, um, North Vertamont Elementary School and Richardson Prep High. And I'm just, I'm going to read this because this is what came with the recognition. After an extensive analysis of student data for every public school in California, Educational Results Partnership, or ERP, recognized North Vertamont Elementary School and Richardson Prep High as clear student achievement leaders for their work in getting students to grade level and beyond. Schools were named to the two, 2019, 2020 Honor Roll, which recognizes public elementary, middle and high schools that demonstrate high levels of student academic achievement, improvement in achievement over time and reduction in achievement gaps. So we want to say congratulations to Principals Kimberly Robel and Jenny Page and their staffs on this outstanding recognition and accomplishment. Let's give them a round of applause. And then finally, uh, as, as has already been said, um, we want to recognize Cajon High School again for the mock trial win. But board, I want to recognize you and the part you play in that, the, you know, on the heels of a very, very, uh, successful athletic strategic plan in which you pumped tons of resources, uh, into, uh, you said, we need to do something about our academic teams. And so we've been able to take LCAP funds and put them toward our academic teams. And you've seen, as they always do, our teams rise to the occasion, uh, and our mock trial team now two-time, two-time county, uh, mock trial champion. So congratulations to, uh, Principal Tina Bishop, uh, Coach Robert Grande and the terrific kids at Cajon High School for bringing this distinction to our district again. Want to emphasize again, excuse me. And then finally, uh, I want to, I want to close with a quote. I absolutely love quotes. And, uh, if you didn't know, last week was, uh, great, the Great Kindness Challenge, uh, throughout California. And a number of us on Cabinet, uh, did individual videos for a teacher over at Barton who was really, uh, putting this on steroids for her classroom. And I want to end with a quote that I heard just this evening. And it's from our kid president that we heard from earlier during Scott, uh, during, uh, uh, Dr. Wyatt's inspirational message. And when he said this, I just got this vision, this complete vision. And the quote is, throw cr- throw kindness around like confetti. And I just saw this like, this rainstorm of confetti, of kindness coming down on everyone. So let's all remember to throw kindness around like confetti, according to our kid president. Thank you. Those are my comments for this evening.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. All right, we are moving now to 10.0, our consent calendar. Board, are you aware?
So moved, so moved.
Yeah, I think that was a move in a second, I think. All right. So I have a motion in a second. And so is there anything that we will be pulling here? Okay, going once, going twice. I guess I'll call for the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now moving to 11.1, Personnel Report Number 12, dated February 2nd, 2021.
As presented.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, we'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Now we are at 12.0, correct? And 12 point re- re- 12.1 review of requests. And I believe Mrs. Ontiveros is somewhere in the screen.
I am here, yes. Thank you, President Rogers. So, um, I did capture quite a few questions, but several of them were answered. So I'm hopeful that as we go through that, you'll agree and, um, we can check those off the list right away. But the first, uh, questions came from, um, Ms. Myra Sabios, who asked first if we could request more information on the total enrollment of students at Savant, including the number of students from outside the district and the demographic information for, um, their student population. She also asked, um, if our, if all charter schools are monitored the same way and, um, that Savant is monitored and asked for what our goals are for charter schools. Um, then, uh, Dr. Flores asked what the timeline is for the board to approve the charter re- school renewals. Um, Ms. Hopwood answered that we'd have 90 days and that in this particular case, the deadline would be March 2nd. Um, Dr. Flores then asked for, um, a copy of the staff report well in advance of the March 2nd meeting. Uh, Dr. Flores followed up with a request to, for the cabinet to follow up with the staff and parents to get clarification about their concerns, uh, the concerns that they have about the location of Savant at Del Vallejo. And, uh, Dr. Hill also echoed that, asking that we speak with the Del Vallejo staff to see if they have enough space for their program. Dr. Flores also asked if we could check with the attorneys about requirements to accommodate, uh, Savant's growth, to provide details about growth projections for the school and to consider whether the site can handle these projections. Um, the next question came from Mr. Tillman. He asked, um, how many, he was asking questions about the ethnicities of our attendance fairs, fires and student recovery specialists primarily to ensure that, um, we could, uh, connect with, uh, the communities that we're trying to reach. And, um, Ms., uh, Dr. Rodriguez answered that we're working with ETA and the school sites are starting to do home visits, um, and our choose are doing that as well. Uh, but we all agreed that we need to make sure that we have people who can connect and understand our families. Um, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked, um, if we had people who were working with our homeless youth to ensure that they're set up to learn and do we survey them about their challenges? And, uh, Dr. Rodriguez answered that and indicated that we use a case management system to track support and deliver the things that they need. Uh, Ms. Myra Sabios then asked, uh, what we're doing to help students, um, with special education to increase attendance and achievement. And, um, Dr. Menares pledged to bring, uh, that focus in the high school presentation. Um, and then, um, um, Ms. Applegate noted that, uh, we, that they're graded differently because of their IEPs. And so, um, we said we could, would consider bringing back a different, more appropriate data set to show the status of the special education students. Um, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked to explain the four-point grading system. And Ms. Freeman from, um, Serrano did, uh, do that for her. Uh, she hopes that we will expand that across the district. Um, Dr. Wyatt and Mr. Tillman asked about when we'd be able to begin practicing sports. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina requested that the district coordinate something for students, um, to attend virtually for mental health purposes. Uh, Mr. Danny Tillman, um, requested that we have information about the potential return to school in the future. And, uh, Dr. Volkmer offered to bring this back in March. Dr. Flores then asked if we could send a letter to, from the board to congratulate the Cajon Mock Trial Team. And Dr. Flores asked if we would post the superintendent search schedule online. And those were all the requests that I captured.
All right, very good. Thank you so much, Ms. Ontiveros. You're on it. shorthand, you know, you could have invented it. Okay, we are now moving.
That was great.
13.1, be- but before we officially adjourn, some of you may have seen them when we were coming back, but we wo- do want to take a moment of silence for some of our staff. And are they ready to bring that up? I'm seeing Dr. Volkmer say yes, okay. Thank you so much for, for that. And we, our prayers go out to the families as well as all the families that have been also affected by COVID. We are sorely going to miss our staff members and we appreciate the services that they provided to the district. So thank you for taking that opportunity to acknowledge them. 13.1 adjournment?
So moved.
Back in.
Back in.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you again for a great board meeting, lots of information. And to our community, thank you for staying with us and just taking it all in as we consider your voice as important as well. And just know, we are in this together. So say, stay safe, continue to wash your hands and distance and we will see you next time. Good night, board. God bless.
Good night. Happy Valentine's Day.
Good night. Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes.
Night. Everybody.